Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started, so... Good afternoon. This is a city council special meeting. Today is Thursday, July the 6th, 2023. It is 5:36 PM. And we are here at the council chambers for the City Hall 100 South Monroe Street, Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas. As always, we start with the establishment of quorum. We do have a full quorum today with Mayor Protem Davis, Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, Councilwoman Cruz, and myself, Mayor Salinas. Moving on to a moment of reverence. We always like to pay respects to our military that are serving here abroad, so if you can have a moment of reverence in their honor, please. Thank you very much. We do have citizens' communications and recognitions. I have been given several citizens' communications. Just out of fairness and respect to everybody that's gonna speak today, there is a time limit for each speaker of three minutes. It doesn't mean that we wanna be disrespectful and cut anybody off, so I just wanted to advise y'all. The first one is Mr. Jesús Fuentes. Hello, Mr. Fuentes. Welcome, sir.
Honorable Mayor Salinas, distinguished council members. It's great to be here, city staff and administrators, audience, and of course, press corps. Greetings. My name is Jesse Fuentes, and I first want to tell you that I wanna thank the mayor and the council for the work that you do. I commend you for making our community a very beautiful place to live. I'm here on behalf of the Rio Grande, and I wanna be a river advocate and explain to you about what's occurring. But first of all, I'd like to, if you don't mind, I'd like to show you a quick video in my... Not the whole video, just a portion, just to pause it. And then I wanna show you a still photo, and we'll go from there, okay?
Okay. The only thing is the time.
Yeah, it's just as... It's not the video, but it's just a quick little shot. Let's see, is this one? Okay, you see that island there, in the center there? That is the island that was recently... Had some work done on it. And my concern was... Now I'm gonna go ahead and go to the still photo, if you don't mind. I think I hit the wrong button.
It's actually the top right.
Top right? Okay. Okay. And this is a... Let's see here. That one. Okay, that's that same island and how it looks. And I, as a river advocate, I was very concerned when I saw that. And there's a lot of things that are happening in and around our river that I am very concerned because I've always believed in protecting our natural resources for the betterment of our future. And when I saw that occur, I just... I was overwhelmed, and that's why I'm here to speak to you. And that's why there's also some guests from Laredo and surrounding communities here that wanna speak about what's occurred and what is occurring. I guess you might have seen an article in the Business Journal that stated that there was a lot of community concern about how this happened. And I guess the central question is, did the City of Eagle Pass follow proper protocol to make sure that this protected river and this island were studied before it was bulldozed? Now, I know this... The river is a federally protected river by so many federal agencies, and I just don't know how it happened. The river just flows. It's not red or blue or white, or it's not a moderate, it's not a centrist, it just flows. And I'm concerned about the fact that these barriers that are proposed to be installed are gonna affect our ecological system on a river that's already strained. And I'm here just to help you as an advocate for the river, to protect the river. It's our main water source, and there's other individuals that are gonna speak after me, and they're prepared to, you know, I guess, tell you their true feelings as to how we're handling this particular situation at Shelby Park. And it's been very difficult for me to see that because I'm an avid supporter of the river. I'm a Rio Grande outfitter. I put people on the river, and when I see that, it really hurts. But I'm just saying, if we have an opportunity, I would like to invite all of you to a press conference. Tomorrow, we're having a press conference at the Shelby Boat Ramp. If you'd like to be in support of the river, you're all invited. These barriers that are going up are setting us up for a chaotic catastrophe because things happen when walls are set up and water flow gets to a certain level. And there's an expert in this audience that's gonna speak also, and she is our hometown pride, as far as I'm concerned, because she just happens to be here during the time that this meeting occurs. She's a fluvial geomorphologist that is a river expert, okay? She can tell you what happens. And she happened to conduct a study here in Eagle Pass with the walls, all three walls that exist here. And I can't wait for her to speak. I'm excited about this situation, and I thank you for your time and for the job that you do. It's not easy being a representative of the constituents of this community, but I'd ask once again, like I've stood before at this pedestal, I ask for you to consider our only main water source, and let's protect it. Let's take care of the ecological system. Let's take care of the potential hazards that are there. And I ask this kindly, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Mr. Francisco Manuel Sanchez?
Mr. Sanchez couldn't be here today, so I will be speaking in his place.
Can we get your full name?
Karime Flores.
Welcome, Karime.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Salinas and City Council. My name is Karime Flores, and I'm Eagle Pass-born and raised, as well as a daughter of Mexican immigrants. I'm currently a student of English and Political Science at Texas Women's University. I have lived my entire life in Eagle Pass and have so many fond memories that revolve around the border and our beautiful river. When I'm in Denton, Texas, studying, I'm constantly talking about the unique and wonderful culture of living on the border. I remember Little League soccer games, baseball and softball practices, Noches Mexicanas, the carnival, and Fourth of July celebrations. All of these events have taken place at Shelby Park and close to the river. I tell stories of how during city events at Shelby Park, people from Mexico line up at the Basel del Río to watch. I tell them about our friendship parades, where bands from Piedras march alongside our local high school bands. I tell them how lucky I am to have grown up in a place that blurs man-made borderlines, but that is being taken away from me and the people of Eagle Pass without our consent. The river, to me, is my identity, my culture, my history. And right now, it seems like no one is speaking for the river, so we will. It breaks my heart to see a public park and our beautiful river becoming militarized war zone with what seems like the approval of our very own city administration. This whole area is already protected by an 11,000, 1.8-mile, 14-foot-high Washt Rock structure that former city administration fought hard against. Besides this structure, the addition of concertina wire, railroad boxcars, cyclone fences, armed National Guardsmen, in-state and out-of-state troopers, and now an experimental river barrier system that encompasses two miles of obstructions to an already severely strained ecosystem. Who will bear financial damages these prototypes will cause? And who is benefiting financially from this? Because we have many examples of how these barrier systems don't work. Why keep trying more... That are more harmful and damaging to the environment and to our community? The Eagle Pass-Piedras Negras border and the Rio Grande River used to be a place of treaties, friendships, and recreation. And now it looks like a war zone, perfectly staged as a political prop for outsider politicians with their own agendas to come in for their photo ops. How many politicians that have no idea what it's like to live on this border have come down here with their cameras? This is our home. This is our community. When did Shelby Park become restricted to the public? What was the reason for this, and why weren't we, the people, informed? Where are the environmental impact studies for this barrier system? Who are the experts that are on board for the buoy system? What kind of environmental impact study was done before the bulldozing of the river's natural islands? Why has there been so much secrecy? There are so many more questions that you, our city representatives, need to answer because you represent us, your constituents, your voters who put you into office. So, we need answers. Please think about the will of the people and stop hurting the river before it starts hurting local businesses, our community, and our culture. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Isaii Fuentes. Welcome, sir.
Hello, thank you. My name is Isaii Fuentes. I am just a humble citizen. In addition, a person who loves the river. And I love all the stuff that we like to... That everyone likes to do around here, you know? Being kind of more solo and being a town folk, a lot of times, we don't really have much to do. But it's really fun whenever we get to see, like, events that we do. Recently, we just had the Independence Day Festival. And I got to go to this festival, however, there's a couple of things there that really kind of made me sad a little. And this has kind of been a running theme that we've had within the year. Not only through the Independence Festival, but also the Noches de Mexicanas, the Friendship Festival. I've gone to those as well. And it just... It felt a little saddening to me because as we go... Excuse me. As we go through these events and we see the people, it kind of feels different. For my 25 years of life existing in Eagle Pass and enjoying each of these yearly festivals, we've always had a freedom with the river, and it's always been very happy to kind of have that interaction with our sister city, Piedras Negras. And having... That's why we have these festivities, the Friendship Festival. We enjoy that interaction, the immigration, the commerce across the border. However, watching this, when I went to the Independence Festival, it almost kind of felt confining and kind of almost antithetical to what independence meant. It almost felt like as if I was like in a prison yard or something with the gates, with the wires and everything. And yet, we were over here watching Gary Hobbs singing his heart out. And it just felt very, very disturbing. And I wanted to see this photo that Mr. Jesse Fuentes shared for myself. However, I couldn't get to see this because I was stopped by the officers there requesting that I needed to have permission or something, which is something that we have public access to. This is public access. And I love this city. I love the boat. I love the boat ramp. I love the river. I love the interaction we have. Yet, it's almost like it's getting lost to the stories that are happening now. And it's kind of hiding our culture, the culture that we fostered here for the years and years. And I don't want that to be seen for the world. I want Eagle Pass to be seen for how amazing it is for being one of the main central channels of Texas, one of the biggest industry of transportation, of commerce. I heard we had like billions of dollars coming through Eagle Pass, and it's amazing, and I'm impressed because we're such a small town. And so, I really wish to be able to see beyond what's being shown here and show them truly what we are versus being used as a tool to push other agenda. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Ms. Juanita Martinez?
I think I'm a little bit out of order here because I actually wanted to speak last, but that's okay. I was here to talk about resurrecting the Citizens' Excellence Award, but in face of this very serious subject and these very serious people that are here because they have a great concern. By the way, Karime is one of our young Democrats, very proud of her. And I think she kind of spoke volumes to all of you. So I think I'll table my Citizens' Excellence Award, which was an award that was given by the very respected Chad Foster to eight Aggie Moms for community service. So, like I said, I'll table that. I'll save it for the next meeting. And thank you for your attention to this. And Karime said it all. Very proud of her.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Adriana Martinez?
Hi, I'm Dr. Adriana Martinez. I graduated from CC1 High School in 2001. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science. I have a Master's in Geography, and I have a PhD in Fluvial Geomorphology, which is the study of rivers. I am a professor at Southern Illinois University Edwardsville, and as Mrs. PDC stated, I have studied the river and the effect of the border fence on the river. I grew up on the Rio Grande here in Eagle Pass. I grew up going to the river to do water quality sampling. And I went yesterday, and it was the first time I've ever been turned away from the boat ramp. I wasn't able to get close to the river. It's the only place near downtown where you can get on the other side of the fence to see the river. I always see the river every time I come home. This river is why I study rivers. I grew up on this river. It was my passion, and I got a PhD in that. It took quite a long time, and it's what I study to this day. I've written scientific articles looking at how the federal fence affects river flow and flooding, how the container fence affects flow, and how the Greg Abbott new fence affects it as well. And now, they wanna put buoys in also. The buoys will change the way that the water flows in this area. Therefore, it's gonna change how the river channel acts itself. And to begin, as we've seen in the pictures here, they've already dredged the channel, exposing sediment to the water, removing vegetation in that area. And so, we have no idea how the river's gonna respond to what's already happening, what's already been done to that part there. They've removed the island. There are other islands further downstream, and I worry that those islands are going to be next. The course of sediment movement is going to affect what sort of pollution is in the rivers. Pollution tends to reside in the sediment, so anytime you're moving sediment, you're going to be moving pollution. And I wanna know, who studied what pollution is there? Who studied what is gonna move, right? Where is that gonna go? I have a lot of questions about how that's gonna affect the flow because when we change the way that the river flows, it's not gonna only affect the river on the US side, it's gonna affect the river flow on the Mexican side too. And there are international treaties stating that we cannot affect flow by a certain percentage on the Mexican side. How much is it affected already by how much has been moved? Quite a lot. There's already the potential for affecting habitat, not only with what's happened, but the concertina wire. If you've been to the golf course, I was there the other day. There is a ball of concertina wire with vegetation in it about twice as tall as I am. What if that gets stuck in the water, right? What if that gets stuck against a bridge pier? What if one of the containers gets stuck against a bridge pier? We all know that water is really powerful. Two feet of water can move a car. It's not gonna take a lot of flooding to move those containers. The buoys are then gonna put in a whole other aspect to the equation. If a tree branch or a tree gets stuck in those buoys and that gets stuck against the fence, it could potentially cause infrastructure damage to the dams that are downstream in Laredo or any bridge, the railroad bridge from here going downstream. I wanna know, where are the environmental impact reports that did this, right? For even just this alone? Where are the environmental impact reports that look at what the buoys are gonna do? There's some saying that the buoys are gonna contain netting and mesh. That's not even allowed in the ocean. Why would you allow that in a river to float around? It's gonna get fish stuck in it, right? People use the river for kayaking, for fishing, recreational purposes, right? They use the dams downstream of that. Where are the surveys of the channel changes and how the channel itself has changed in that spot or wherever the buoys are gonna be placed? What are the impacts that we're gonna have, right? Pollution is something I already mentioned. What questions did you ask before this was approved, right? What questions were asked before this happened, right? This looks like a war zone. There's nothing there anymore. The vegetation's not there to protect the sediment from moving downstream. What constituents did you speak to before this was approved, right? Did Greg Abbott talk to people that asked, "Hey, how do you use this space? How do you use this river? How is this gonna affect that use? How is that gonna affect the use of Shelby Park?" We couldn't even go close to the river. What reports were read about what was happening here? Ultimately, it's a liability that's gonna cost taxpayers money because these materials, the buoys, the concertina wire, the containers that are sitting on the river channel is gonna change the river flow. Anytime you put something close to the river, right? I was upset enough about the federal fence, but that was on the floodplain. I thought that was horrible when they put that in. Little did I know that there were gonna be containers put right along the bank, then buoys in the water, right? Every time you get closer to the river water, you're going to have more impacts. It's gonna change the river flow. It's gonna change the habitat. It's gonna damage infrastructure. And we don't know what far-reaching effects those would have in time, but also going downstream. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Definitely valid concerns that the community has. As you all know, unfortunately, this is not a question-and-answer session as per the rules of government, but with administration, we will have answers to those questions. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you all. So, at this time, we will go ahead and move to item number one. And I'll go ahead and like... I'd like to invite council up here at the front to join me, please. Well, we have a... Today, we have a very, very special presentation where we get to honor one of our own. Many of you all know, but the retirement of Mr. Cacho Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval has worked as a director for public work many years. He's worked with the City of Eagle Pass 35 years. That's almost as long as I've been alive. A lot of years of service, a lot of loyalty by Mr. Cacho Sandoval, a person that the city is gonna miss because he helps council, administration, everybody so much. Mr. Sandoval has so much knowledge when it comes to Eagle Pass and even Maverick County. He knows every flood zone by memory, every street, every intersection by memory. And he's someone that we admire. And we're definitely, as a city, we're gonna miss him. But I know that you did leave a good team in place, Cacho, and we appreciate all those years of hard work and dedication. Sometimes, we don't even have the words to say how lucky the city was to have you, and we thank you for your service. And we wanted to present this plaque to you. And I know that you're a person that... You don't like to get the attention all the time, but it's something that you deserve.
I'm here just like, is it my wife?
Please. We'd like to invite your wife up here, please. We wanted to present this to you. And it reads as follows: Presented to Jesse Sandoval in appreciation for 35 years of dedicated and valuable service to the City of Eagle Pass. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Cacho? This is for you.
To the lovely wife?
It always takes a good support system, so I know Mrs. Sandoval and your family.
HR has something to present.
We're gonna need a trash.
I'm sure Kate knows what it is.
You have enough time.
This is also for you, Mr. Sandoval. It's just so you can put it... It's a photograph since you started. There we go. A lot of good memories. And this is for you, sir. And at this time, well, you want me to hold it for you for now? I'll invite council if anybody has any words.
I can't, Joe. It's been overwhelming too much. Every day, we talk on the phone. Yeah, he knows that he's missed, and we're beyond grateful. So, thank you for still doing your rounds without pay because I know he is on the streets. He cannot help it. He's on the phone every day, but he told me, just checking everything, that it's going well. So, yes, I'm beyond grateful and forever will. Thank you.
Can we get a picture with everyone? HR, you want to? Mr. Robbie, get Iman here. Iman, please. Thank you. And Mr. Cacho, I hate to put you on the spot, but if you want to...
Muchas gracias al mayor, el consejo, y administración que está hoy aquí. Y la que estaba antes porque trabajé con varios... With Mr. Billy Davis, trabajé varias veces before even he came to this council. He was before in council, before. And I had a lot of city managers that I've worked with. I'm real glad that I worked with the city this long and for 35 years that I could help my kids out in college with the city, working with the city. I know the city doesn't owe me anything. I own the city because with the money, with the city, I could help my kids go to college. And that's what I'm real proud from the city.
Thank you, Rachel. I don't wanna say too much.
One of the go-to persons that I've always relied on in my different terms is council. I don't wanna say that on the oldest one here, but more experienced on council. But you've made my job as a council person that much easier. And whether it was related to public works or not, you gave me always great advice, very honest, very direct. It was more of a friendship than a working relationship. But we're also very thankful of his wife to share him with us as a city because there was a lot of times that you had... You had, you know, different things happen in the middle of the night, and you always did what you needed to do to put our citizens first. And we don't take that lightly, and I don't, and I'm very appreciative. I know there was times... I remember when one of the fightings happened once a while back that some of the members of the police department and public works were actually there to help me and my family be evacuated because we needed to be. And those are things that you never forget. And you don't forget good people, and you don't forget good friends. And I know personally, and I think professionally, we're gonna miss you. And like I said, not only your expertise that you brought to us as a council, but you're always a friend to rely on. And like I said, our friendship goes on beyond, but working here at City Hall, we're gonna miss you. And it's, like I said, it's almost impossible to... It's gonna be impossible to replace you, but the good thing about your leadership is that you... you, but the good thing about your leadership is that you left good leaders to take over. And, you know, and that's what a great leader is about. It's not only about just doing for what yourself, but it's building a coalition behind you. And that's something you did, and that's one of the things that I've learned from you. So, I thank you, Chris.
And of course, the doors remain open for you to come visit whenever you want. I'm sure you're...
Not too long.
And whenever that new building is done, you need to be there to welcome that new building.
Absolutely.
He's been retired for 13 years.
I'll take two minutes. And only because, during our director's meeting, Mr. Ivan put us all on the spot to give a speech to Mr. Sandoval, and I forgot something. And so, Mr. Sandoval, if you look at his 30-plus years, what he did with the city of Eagle Pass, nobody wants to say that this gentleman here never wants to say no with any project. And that's because that's a true definition of a public servant. When you're a public servant, you never say no. And Mr. Sandoval has demonstrated to be that public servant. And we're going to miss him. And yes, every time we have projects and that, even though we try to get it grant-funded and, don't let him know, because he's going to want to do the project. But, because he doesn't want to say no. But again, ladies and gentlemen, we have here a true definition of a public servant, Mr. Sandoval. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to take just a couple of, like, I know we all have a lot to say about Mr. Sandoval. I didn't get an opportunity to work with Mr. Sandoval for a very long time, but during the short time that we did get to work together, he made a long-lasting impact in the way that I view, not just the public works department, but also our hiring process and making sure that our hiring process was equitable and fair to everybody living in Eagle Pass, which is something that's very important to me. So, that's something that I'm going to be able to carry with me throughout the rest of my career on council, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your advocacy, for your team, and for everything that you do day in and day out, and what you're still continuing to do for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I talked to Mr. Sandoval about all of this, and he was making fun, actually, the last time, because he said, what else are you going to say about me? But I have a lot of things to say about you, Mr. Sandoval, but I think one thing that I haven't said is that you are a true example of what a lot of us want to do, a lot of us want to achieve as city employees. I know, by talking to some directors, by, to some employees, is that we want to make it a great, we want to make it a great, and say, you know what? We did our time with the city, and we did the best for the city. And I think you were a great role model, at least for me, in that sense, because you did it right. So, when I say you did it right, is because you actually did. So, you worked your life, you grew up here, you grew up as a professional, you did your time, you did a lot of projects, and now you retire. So, that's the life that I wish to one day live and go through. I think I count my days sometimes to get to those 20, I just want to get to 20 years. 35 years is truly something that is remarkable, especially the way you did it. So, when I said you did it right, that was a way that I hope one day to be here and retire, like you just said. But you, you actually set a way for us to follow and for us to get to that level. I know it's difficult, but 35 years, it's a lot. And 35 years of actually, like Ronnie said, actually being a true public servant and did it with the heart of loving the city and with the passion. And I know we're going to miss you a lot. I know you don't want me to make it too long, but basically, what I wanted to just tell you is that you made it right. You did it right. And that's something that is very inspiring for a lot of us.
Awesome. Excellent. Excellent. Well, I mean, I haven't been here for more than three months, so I didn't work much with Cacho. And, but the little bit I did get to work with you, Cacho, is that... I did get to work with your wife for a little bit, so I know you're a wonderful family. And like I said, once again, no, 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 no. That's right. We're ever grateful. Enjoy your time. If we could please go to number 25, under Other Business. Consideration and possible approval of an inter-local agreement with the Middle Real Grand Development Council for 911 Public Safety Answering Point Services. Mr. Gara, how are you, sir?
Basically, here, I'm here for the inter-local agreement between the PSAP located at the Eagle Pass Police Department. Of course, every year, we do the inter-local agreements. So, now this year is two years, and so far, it's going to be that. So, basically, I'm just here to see if you have any questions. It's free of charge. Everything is done through Middle Real Grand, 911. And, and basically, I'm here to see if you have any questions of what, what you read in the inter-local agreements.
No, well, we appreciate the service to the community, and this is always good for Eagle Pass. So, I don't have any questions. I don't know if council has any questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement. We have a motion by Mayor Potem Davis and a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
All right. Well, thank you.
That was easy, Mr. Ever. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Have a good evening. At this time, we'll go ahead and get to the public hearings, and we'll start with number two. Public hearing on an amendment to Chapter 23, subdivisions, Article 3, Section 23-94 of the City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances, by updating new provisions to allow new development for uniform, uniform standards regarding fences. Closing of public hearing and possible action. We will go ahead and open this public hearing at 6:14 PM.
Mayor, council, thank you. So, we've talked about fences quite a bit. I'm going to keep it brief. We have heard from contractors, still a little bit of an issue for some, the partial. Well, we kind of came to an agreement. We scaled it down from requiring the full fence, so I think they were appreciative of the scale down. But I guess the part they're still trying to get your consideration on is potentially eliminating it completely. And that's needing to build fence when building a new home in order to get the certificate of occupancy. This is the wording that explains it. I think some visuals would be better, but essentially, this is depicting in yellow what we've agreed upon. If you're in an interior lot, meaning you're between other, other lots, at the time of construction, you would need to build those two yellow sections in the front facing the street, and then the rear, the rear property line. So, those two yellow, or three yellow sections depicted there. If you're in a corner lot, we imagine this would be a street, and then another street in the front. You would do the same front two in the rear, but in addition, the side facing the other right-of-way would be included. So, this is what we've, what we've come to with our ordinance. But again, the contractors have still presented some concerns with it. And at a Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, they also asked that it be brought back for council's reconsideration. So, that's the extent of it, and I'll take any guidance or direction from you on this.
Let me start off by asking if anyone in the public, or I don't know if we're also available online, if anybody has any comments, concerns about this. Because, okay, if we don't, then I'll take counsel. And I know that we've been trying to work with, with contractors, and there's, there's always a reason, right, that we, we have ordinances, that we have rules to follow. And that's not to negatively impact contractors or people, right? What we're, I'm assuming we're trying to do is run a nice government, efficient, something that looks good. Sometimes, when we feel that there's need changes, we make the changes, which I think this was a very helpful for the contractors when you compare this to the requirement that you had before. So, that is, my opinion is, I feel that that's a fair option, but of course, it's not just me here, so I'll open it up for any comments.
I know I started all this. So, I mean, I understand that it's a big change. Everyone, I believe that it was, that it was a fair deal, that we, we reduce the price, we reduce, you know, what, what they were, I mean, their concerns. I received some concerns, again, regarding the back fence only, not necessarily the corner lot, not necessarily the front gates. Their concern, again, is the back fence. I mean, before, I, I mean, I agree that the way we have it from before to now, it's, it's quite fair, but they're still complaining about the back fence. Pretty much, they just want, the corner lots, they agree, with the gates on the front and the sides, which I think it's more than fair, and it gives a better curb appeal, which that's what we're trying to, to stay within. And, I mean, I guess just, they just want to keep the, the front gates and not the back. So, that's the only comments that I can share with, with council regarding that matter.
I have a question. What else did they express to you? I'm sorry. No, no. No, that was basically it. I wanted to, what were their, their concerns or the rationale behind their concerns?
Mainly, the, the cost and the designing, a lot of times, are done as spec homes. A builder's doing a home, doesn't necessarily have the buyer already at the time of construction or the time of completing it. And so, two big things they bring up a lot is, one, the cost of fences do not come out in the appraised value. And so, it makes, it becomes problematic for people at times to get their loan, even if just those couple thousand that it's, you know, kind of sways it over appraised value. And then the other thing is, they will build a fence, like I said, generic, you know, wooden fence in a certain color, and whoever ends up buying it may not want that style, or want that stained color, or want that. And they would have been, they would essentially have had to pay in the cost of the home and then have to pay to redo it. So, those are probably the top concerns that they were brought up with that. And just to go back to the history, so we, up until 2019, there was not a requirement to build any, any sections of fence. Around early 2020, that was put in that the full extent was. So, it's a fairly new thing in our, kind of our history of construction, that any fencing requirement is a part of new, new residential construction. So, I think that it's still, I guess people still haven't gotten used to this.
No, and again, I mean, I brought it back because I live it personally, and it is something that, the cost of the fence, you know, it's just out of hand, because mostly the houses won't appraise, including the fence, because the fence, you can show an appraiser the invoice of what that fence costs, and it's not going to get the value to it. So, same with landscaping. They tell you, well, by the time that you close, maybe everything is dead. So, pretty much, that's the same, you know, mentality and the same result. So, overall, just so that I don't keep talking, I honestly believe that for curb appeal and safety, I will keep the, I mean, my personal opinion, the, the corner lots, the way we suggested it, and, I mean, just leaving the, the shared fence with the neighbor up to them. And, I mean, I can live with the gates only in the front with the other houses. And yes, I understand, some people would like to do a different kind of fence. They want to do different pillars. I mean, it's just, you know, so many ways. And, and what we don't want is people to get rejected of a CEO and, and, you know, enjoy the house because of a fence issue that they don't have the money for. So, I mean, I honestly believe that we can, we can, you know, survive with just the gates on the front and just the corner lots to just implement the three sides only.
Is your, is your suggestion in the rear boundary line, remove that part of the apartment?
The corner, I mean, no, the corner, I'm sorry. Yes, we put the back one right. With just the, the gates on the front, the side, and...
Keeping what faces to the right-of-way?
What faces to the right-of-way, yes. Or to the street, let's put it that way.
Yeah, and it needs to be, I think the wording needs to be cautious with that about the street, because I remember that the intent of this was also the fact that you have some rear lots facing major terraces, and that's where a lot of this started. Because you have that issue, like on Flower Street, where it's the backyard. I know Eddie can chime in on this.
The easements.
It's, yeah, I mean, where the easement is facing the, the major terrace, and that's where some of this had come in.
And it looks, it doesn't look aesthetically, yeah.
You want uniformity, and it's just like, you know...
And again, I wanted to, to include the one on the back to actually control that they knew where to put it, and we don't have any, any issues in the future. I mean, because sometimes they don't get the permits. I mean, they should get a fence permit. Sometimes, they, they don't know, or they don't want to. They do it their own way, and they actually, and they were facing those problems later, and it's kind of hard to make them...
I mean, but let's say we, we make a, a change, and then somebody complains, and we change it again? I mean, at some point, we need to also stick with, with it. And I think, but, but what's, what is your recommendation as a planning director?
And before anything, my only concern on the back is, on the easement side, that we haven't, I mean, that's another subject that I keep fighting over. Well, thank God, right now, the easements pretty much are always on the front. We barely see them on the back in new subdivisions. But I'm still trying to figure it out, the ones on the back, because it's really awful. I mean, yes, it is the owner's property, they need to maintain it, but we're not allowing them to enjoy that extra couple of feet. So, it's really hard to get around your property and clean it. And again, it's just messy, it looks bad, the same problem, you know, it keeps going and going. So, I guess we can avoid the one on the back just for that reason until we decide what we're going to do with the easements, and then, you know, make it right. Because maybe we're going to be the ones telling them, well, now move it, because we changed something about the easements. I mean, I don't know what you think.
I wanted to bring up that concern a little while ago, too, about the easement. A lot of people have a fence, and yet, they have to be going behind it. And easements in several or certain neighborhoods have been a place for pickup, a place for pickup of illegal immigrants. So, that is a concern for several neighborhoods, communities within our city, that nobody is in charge of those easements, because we're not allowing them to, to build or take care of that piece of property, even though it is their responsibility. So, when you, you come up with that back fence, I'm okay with a back fence being built, but are you, do you have an easement? Does a person behind you have a center block fence already that doesn't require you to build a fence? So, I think we have to be considerate of what's behind that house before we force you to. So, I think, my personal opinion, we have to come up with several scenarios or guides of, do you, or are you required to build a fence in this new home? Is there a fence already behind you? Is there an easement behind you? Are you going to have to take care of it? Is it in a corner lot? Da, 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 da. Kind of like an engineer guide, you know? Yes, no, continue to this side, kind of thing.
Yeah. I, I agree, but it's going to be hard to enforce every single scenario. There could be so many exceptions.
So, maybe just avoid the one on the back, and just keep the ones on the front, and the corner lots, front and side. That's my recommendation.
I do, I do have a question. I know that you had mentioned that some, some developers reached out, right? I'm wondering if we've heard from, from real estate agents on the possible impact on the housing market.
Yes. They're the ones who are mostly concerned.
Concerned about?
About having issues at the... About having issues that the houses are not appraising, that maybe some deals just go off, or the builder sacrifices, you know, part of their net, the realtors their commission, and so forth, or the owners' part of their pocket money. Because they cannot, they have to put a difference. If not, they don't close because of the lender. So that's an issue that actually was brought to us by both, the contractors and the realtors.
Do you have a recommendation as planning director on this?
The simplest thing I think would be not having the requirement. I think it's a matter of us picking what is the, what is our big goal here? Beautification, I know we have, you know, vision and goals of beautifying the city. And so I think part of that is knowing that, and I know Mr. McGee's also brought up this topic a lot about our vision. So what, you know, knowing that would help me to say, well, this is what I would recommend. If our vision is beautifying more uniformity, then having something like this is good. But then, you know, we're trying to look at affordable housing, reducing cost, you know? So there's very different, depending on which lens you look at it through.
Yeah.
So I do think that when it comes to affordable housing, I'm happy to see that, you know, we're going to touch on that today. But when it comes to affordable housing, we're really falling behind. And as the community continues to grow, we don't have a lot of affordable housing options. And so, this is going to impact the market in that way and make homes less affordable and present a barrier down the line. I think that's something we need to consider on the front end.
And that's why we said just the gates, because they're the least expensive ones. And then the one on the back, because it's less, I mean, the...
The less long.
The less long, uh-huh. Just the sites are the longest, and depending on which part of the city or, you know, you are at. So, I mean, just to have the clean look, but at the, I mean, unified, but at the same time, not making anyone spend or lose the opportunity of, you know, affordable housing. Then that's why I just suggested the front. And of course, it makes sense on the corner. Because it's going to look odd just to have everything open. But it is open either for that or not at all.
This is a public hearing, any additional comments? We get to take action after, right? After closing on this? So there's nothing for...
I don't know, maybe should we consider more options before we actually?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it's, we're going to keep wiping it off.
We can always close a public hearing, and if somebody has a motion that they'd like to entertain?
That's fine.
At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:28 PM. And I'll entertain a motion on this item if anybody wants to make a motion of their liking. I know that we had several opinions, so...
I want to make a motion to just approve the front gates and the full corner lot fence. If that's okay in removal of the back fence for the in-between homes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, a second by Councilwoman Cruz. You got that, and at this time, we'll take a vote.
Mayor, if I may, this is a public hearing, so in order to change the ordinance, we need to have the three readings on the ordinance. So this is not necessarily to change it. So we'll have to come back and actually have the three readings on the ordinance. So this is just a public hearing to actually provide, get input from the citizens and provide, get input from the council.
Possible action, there's no action needed?
The action can be guidance to us, but not necessarily change the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll take the directive to modify it, remove that rear section, and then we'll bring it back for the readings. Do you want me to?
At that point, we'll vote, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Item three, public hearing on an amendment to Article Five of the Parkland Dedication Ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances by updating new provisions to new developments for uniform standard regarding parkland. Closing of public hearing and possible action. We'll open this public hearing at 6:30 PM.
Mayor Council, so this item has to do with our parkland dedication. I want to give quick highlights on the purpose. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Gutierrez to help us out in discussing some important points from the Parks Master Plan. So the purpose of the Parkland Ordinance, and this is a section specifically from the amended, the proposed ordinance, and it talks about public park and recreation areas being valuable assets that advance the public's health, safety, and welfare. New residential development in the city and ETJ creates the need for additional parks to cater to the additional population, the additional demand. The intent and the key part of this is to require new development to pay its proportionate costs that are associated with providing new parkland in order to maintain the same level of parks or parkland per population. And again, it's basically allocating more of the cost to those new population that are creating the additional demand. So that's kind of the big thing that we're looking at when we're talking about and bringing this team. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Gutierrez, I think he has some specific stuff he wants to show.
Yeah, there we go. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. So, don't know if you recall the last time we brought this item to council. Councilman Diaz, I remember the question you asked about opportunity areas for parks that were pending. But I think it's really good to provide illustrations as far as you can take out a general viewer landscape for current park system. So this map is what's called a park service area. So if you look at it here, these little green spaces, here, 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 those are our neighborhood parks. And the green raised around it, that's called the search area. They're supposed to cover, which is half a mile. Then you see these bigger, probably what I say, orange-red spaces here, which is around Shelby Park and or Maverick County Lake. Those are what's called community regional parks, matches you see, they have a larger area radius, right? And it does outline here our city limits and our ETJ. So that is just a park service outlook, what we currently have. And this does not include, of course, our sports complex, this is from 2015 on our master plan. This next one, NRPA, which is National Recreation Park Association, they also like to advocate for parks in, you know, areas of public explorer areas. Naturally, because that's where a lot of the young families and families or kids are located around. So this is just a general overview of our school system, where these schools are located, and how they fit into regional, community, and neighborhood parks. This next one, this really quantifies our current acreage, where we're at and where we're pending. So if you look at existing parks, these are NRPA standards to your left. Then you have our existing park acreage within city limits. I know we've spoken about this one, mini pocket parks, that's the one that's in, it is what we call a dire need. We don't, we really don't have any acreage of that, other than our city park, which was done after this master plan. Neighborhood parks were 26.31, that does not include Villarreal, which is currently being negotiated for destruction. And then we have here to our left side, the current needs based on the 2015 census. Of course, that's kind of stayed the same. And then you go into this column here, and you start to see where we're at as far as our negative, right? So we're pretty much a negative in almost in all of them, but we are not too far off, right? That's our current acreage right there that we're off. Of course, it does not include Villarreal, and it doesn't include sports complexes, which does push us more to where we're supposed to be at. So that's that. Also, if, what this plan also does, it also compared our park system with the Colonia's and other ETJ. As you head off more into ETJ, outside of limits, you start to see a little bit more need, right? So now that 76 acres goes up to 220. And you combine both of them, what acreages that we're pending, and we're at that. And then you go, our next one, this is my last map. You start to see here the areas of opportunity of need, and also opportunity areas within city limits and within the ETJ. A lot of this area you see here is, you know, creek area, a lot of the past cycle mines, that's in ETJ. You have this area here within city limits, these three areas here. You have a little bit more, so we have these areas here, of course, which is the ETJ. So basically, what I want to do is just want to give you guys a general, a word of our park system, quantify our acreage, and give you a sense of what, what opportunity areas are out there, what's pending, to tie into, of course, this park dedication ordinance. And we don't have any questions, I'll pass it out to Basi, but I don't know if we have any questions on any of these.
Overall, we're not, are you saying that we're not that far off?
We are not that far off, but as our population continues to increase, the demand increases. So that's where we're getting the risk of falling off of that.
The park in Villarreal, how many acres is that?
That one?
Approximate?
It's around in between three to five, I believe it was.
That's the average size?
Yes.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll go ahead and pass over back to Basi.
So I do have a question, I know that we have the Villarreal pending, right? The one in the Basswood?
Bass subdivision.
Yeah, the Bass subdivision, where are we at with that one?
That one, I'll go ahead and refer to Finance Administration, because I know there was some access issue points with that one as far as developing a parkland without having access from the developer into that parkland.
Oh, okay.
Yes, on that one, we actually receive, basically what is going to be covered here, which is sometimes we get either land, that's what we call it, parkland dedication, or sometimes we get a fee based on lots. On that one, we receive parkland. So we actually got a piece of land, but the way that the land is, it doesn't connect to any street. So we had talked to the developer and said, we're willing to build a park, because the developer really wanted for us to have a park there. So we said, we're willing to build a park, but we need the connection to it. So he never did want to build it. So we're looking on the area to see, now with the new development, there's another subdivision that's close by. So we're looking as to what park can we do in that area. But something that, it was too costly for us to get to build that road to access the park. So we're looking for more options, as Ricky mentioned. We're looking at the areas that we don't have either community parks or pocket parks, so that we can expand on that. But mainly, the issue again with that one was the connection, the connectivity from the subdivision to the parkland area.
Placido?
So I'll get into some of the more details on the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, and some numbers, also some examples. And Villarreal Park is a perfect example we're going to talk about. I did want to just point out, I snipped a few areas from the proposed Parks Master Plan, where it talks about linear parks, you know, the importance of those and the location. So that's basically like trails where, and a lot of times you connect parks by trails. Like, you know, San Antonio is very famous for, you could basically get all around town through the trail network there. Neighborhood parks, a key part that I wanted to point out here is, again, this is from our 2015 adopted Parks Master Plan. It does talk about neighborhood parks being a desirable size of minimum five acres evenly distributed. That's going to come up in a moment, that minimum five acres point. And then on-street bikeways is also pointed out in our Parks Master Plan. And, you know, I am proud to say it's something that we're working on getting started with on-street bikeways for alternative transportation. So getting into some more of the details of this proposed ordinance. Numbers may be a little bit small, let me see, I'll zoom in a bit. Was unable to zoom, I'll cover the numbers with you. So some of these numbers are pulled out of the inventory, what Ricky just covered. So it shows we have community parks, 134 acres, neighborhood parks, 26 acres, ball field, 26 acres, linear parks, eight acres, and Colonia parks, 26 acres, for a total park acreage of 221. This is taking out like specialty parks, like the golf course, things like that are considered specialty parks that are not typically counted in these type of data comparisons. So again, 221 is an important number of the total park acreage. City population, roughly 29,000. So we take a ratio, we get an important ratio here of taking our population of 29,000 divided by 221, which is our total park acreage. And that tells us we have approximately one acre of parks for every 129 residents. And essentially, you know, as was mentioned before, we're not too far off of NRPA standards. We're pretty close to them, not quite there, but we're doing fairly well compared to a lot of other communities. So you see, it's a key ratio, the more homes, the more people, the more you water down that number. As we go down, the other real big part of this proposed parkland dedication ordinance is creating two components. Right now, it's just a land component. So somebody could potentially do a development based on the acre, the number of lots. They dedicate a certain number of land with no funds for actually doing anything with the land. So therefore, the city has come, you know, many times, like Villarreal, Hunter Park in the Bass subdivision, where the land is donated, and the city needs to figure out a budget to do something with it. It stays vacant for a while. So this makes two components, park land and park development.
So as it is now, it's park land that's...
Park land strictly just for land, yeah. And that amount is 1,150 per lot, 1150 per lot. So with this proposed, and this proposed, this is Dr. Crompton's guidance for us, based off of numbers that he, you know, is assumptions. These are key things over here on the left, and I'll put it in large font. So this is based off assumptions of 20,000 per acre for development land that may be low. And then that's assuming $300,000 per acre for park development in order, in other words, building playground, putting a trail or sidewalk, walking area, the different amenities that go into it. And when we get into some details, like the Villarreal example, you'll see this is going to be a low assumption. But with these assumptions, again, we have numbers coming up to $555 for the fee in lieu of land, plus 972 for development cost, for a total of 1527, 1,527. That would be the new comparison to what's currently 1150 per lot. Went through a lot of numbers there, any questions with that before?
The 1527, you're saying that that would pay for the development of the land?
Based off of these assumptions, which we're going to show are probably still low. But it would be closer to covering the costs. But we'll, yeah, we'll show a little more detail on that, that's a good point. Any other questions with these numbers before? Okay, I'll move on to an example. So Villarreal is, I think, the perfect example, it's a recent number. We have recent numbers and actual cost proposals when we went out for the solicitation. So the two proposals, the two bids that we got, roughly, if you kind of make them apples to apples, you're looking at somewhere at 800, 900,000 dollars for the improvements. Not including the land, the land was already dedicated, so that's just to build improvements on that park. Based off of the information I saw on the plat, it's about a one and a half acre tract, that parkland of Villarreal. So it's on the smaller size of, based on parks. That was part of two phases of Villarreal subdivisions, total of 96 residential lots. And it was a 33-acre development. So the 1.45 is roughly 5% or so of the total developed area. And so if you do the math based off of this, if that was strictly just for that neighborhood, you take the 800, 900, $100,000 cost of improvement divided by those 96 lots, it would be like 8 or 9,000 dollars per lot to actually cover the cost of what we're trying to do on this. And, you know, Ricky could probably also talk more about this if necessary, but we would consider basically, it has a basic park need. You know, it's not like we're going with extravagant things or extra things, but we're just outfitting it with a walking area, some playground area, seating area, so... area, some playground area, seating area, so parking, you know, some landscape, you know, nothing too crazy, but that's just the cost of where things are right now. Any questions with, with any of these numbers, you know, actual, actual data here? Now, the good thing, and I think it's important to note, this will service a lot more than the 96 lots that are part of Villarreal, there's a lot of the Encino Drive and...
I'm sure people will even drive to use that park.
So, so again, I think when we, so when we look at the numbers, we probably would want this kind of spread out amongst more lots. And that kind of ties into the bigger park too. This is, you know, much on the smaller size, for that area, I think they would need a couple more acres to service all those hundreds of houses in that area. Another important point, I just wanted to showcase a couple snips from Zillow, you know, basic entry level houses now are really high price, 1,300 square feet is, you know, maybe you might find 1,200 or even 1,100, sometimes you find some smaller, but this is kind of a typical entry level, and the cost is, is pretty high, 100, I mean, 220,000 is kind of what, what you see in a lot of cases, and so...
Yeah, they were $100,000 less a few years back.
It's, it's amazing how they've jumped. So the prices, we have to also always consider the affordability of housing, anything we do like this would be passed on by the developer to the owners, so essentially, the end user, the buyer is going to be paying that, so it could be a direct impact to this. Dr. Crompton says, the studies he's done, is essentially it finds a way of balancing out, you know, the builders, if they could charge 225,000 for a house, this exact house, they would, but they charge what the market dictates they can get for it. So we don't believe that it would actually cause lots or houses to go up in price, but some modification would happen, maybe a little bit smaller square footage, maybe different amenities inside change, maybe the lot, you know, whatever, some other change may need to happen, but essentially, the market rate is, people pay what they can afford, and that's what the market is dictating, that's the price that they can go for right now. So that's just another key point I wanted to point out, and then some other, outside of the dollars and cents, other key elements of the proposed ordinance that I wanted to make sure and point out, and we've taken this to planning and zoning, and they pointed out a couple of these, so I wanted to make sure we, we talk about this here too, is the parkland dedication or fees prior to recordation of the final plat, is the timing for parkland dedication. If it's a phased development, the entire park land shall be platted concurrently with the plat of the first phase of the development. So if it's, say, a four or five phase development, all of the parkland would be dedicated and platted within that first phase. The fees, the development fees come in each phase, so if it's a cash thing, then it's only based off the number of lots being developed in each phase, but if it's, there's going to be the land component involved, the entire land would be part of phase one. And then we get to the next point, the city, and our Parks Department specifically knows it's very difficult, the more you spread out, the more small parts you are, the more costly it is, time consuming to maintain them. And so this ordinance, and as we saw also, our Parks Master Plan shows, five acres is the, is the minimum recommended. Now, they put it, the wording, the proposed wording allow, will allow the city for deviating from that, it says will not normally accept dedication that's smaller than five acres. So the city would like a three acre park, you know, we have plenty of them currently, Gadea Park and things like that, a lot of our typical neighborhood parks are less than five, but I think in the way the city's growing, I think we need to move more towards the typical standards seen throughout the country, and that assists our Parks Department and maintenance in not having so many places to be driving around to, to maintain. Then the other, two other key points, the city will not normally accept land in floodplain, and then detention, retention areas may not be used to meet dedication requirements. So those are keys, pieces I pulled out throughout the entire text, you know, you have full access to that, if you have other points of the, the ordinance you want to ask about, we'd be glad to discuss that. Oh, one other very important point, our current ordinance and this proposed ordinance does include ETJ, ETJ development with parkland fees. And so that's a key point that I've heard various opinions about, and some people feel it's unfair in the city collecting parkland fees for an area that's outside of city limits, where the city would not build a park or maintain parks. We did discuss this with Dr. Crompton, who again is, is an expert in the field, has looked at this in many areas of the country. We, we proposed a possibly like a 50% of the, what would be, what would be the rate for city for ETJ. And his response was, there's, there's no reason to discount an ETJ, because, one, the ETJ residents are likely to use Eagle Pass Park facilities, Sports Complex and all Shelby, various parks that we have throughout the community, are used by everybody in and outside of the city limits. And, and B, they pay no property taxes to the city, they being ETJ residents, and so do not contribute their share, their fair share, these are his words, to operating costs for parks. So it's another critical points to, to consider there. I have some other examples, like I think this will be the last key thing I'll point out, if you want to ask some questions after. So Del, we checked Del Rio, they do not have an adopted parkland dedication fee, they don't charge anything for that during subdivision development. Uvalde also does not have a fee, Laredo does, and we have more detail on theirs, if, if you'd like to see that, McAllen does as well, and theirs is also a, has a formula for both land and development fee, is, is what's being proposed with ours. So have more details that I can get into, if you want to see different examples, but I see, those are the key details that I wanted to bring up before either other public comment and questions from council.
Well, let's, let's start with the public, right? If anybody in the public has any, any questions, any concerns with, with this issue? Counsel? Anyone from council?
What do you recommend?
I recommend we move towards getting closer to where the new developments pay either their, the full amount or closer to, right now, we're a small fraction of probably, you know, 1,150 is what we collect right now, and the costs are probably closer to 3, 4, 5,000 dollars to do it. I think we should work towards moving, not all at once, I wouldn't recommend we do anything drastic. Maybe some cities do this, where they have a plan over five years, they gradually step to where it's a more, everybody has time to adjust and prepare, and it's not such a drastic change to the economy or the housing market. But I do believe that in order for the city to try to maintain the level of parks, or even maybe edge up a little bit to, to meet those NRPA standards, I think the, there does need to be a proportionate investment from the, the development that's, that would be kind of weakening or watering down our population per acre parkland. So I do think we need to move in this direction, and I think we just need, we need more directive of, of how we do that, how we move in this direction.
Definitely not a jump from, from 11 to, to 3, but you, you did mention 1527.
So that's what's proposed, based on, again, those assumptions of $20,000 per acre of development land, undeveloped land, and $300,000 for, per acre cost of developing. But again, when we look at the reality of it, 300,000 per acre would be, in this case, for a one and a half acre, roughly 450,000, so we're only about half the actual cost. So again, if, if, if we stay lower, then that means a general taxpayer is coming in to foot the, the rest of that.
Sure.
And the general taxpayer already has the responsibility of all the maintenance in perpetuity. So I, I do believe in this case, that the, the subdivider, the new, the new homes, because eventually it does fall on that buyer, the home buyer, that's where the cost is going to be passed down to. So that home buyer is essentially an investment of a few thousand dollars for them to have a park in their vicinity for health, you know, all the different benefits that get out of it.
It is a big benefit to the area.
So even if it was 2,000 or 3,000, which is a lot, a drastic jump today, which I don't recommend doing today, but I think it would be a very good investment for that home buyer to have something in a, in a walkable distance to be able to exercise, do different things like that. And so again, one other key point though, is, you know, just that the five acre thing was another big concern from planning and zoning, I want to make sure I address that. So if we look at the 129 residents, essentially, this is trying to maintain that level of parkland to population, so if you take that 129, one acre, so that would mean to get to a five acre, or to need a five acre, you're talking about almost 650 lots. So it's a very, very large area of development that would necessitate that five acre. There was a misconception or misunderstanding from some of the members of P&amp;Z saying, well, our developments are only 30 lots at a time, sometimes 60, 100 total over phases, it's, it's not feasible to do five acres for every, every development, that, that's not at all the case.
Yeah.
For five acres, it would be for basically 650, for a very large amount of buildings, and we typically see 100 to 120 new houses per year. So those are key, key things to keep in mind as we're looking at this, at this topic.
Yeah, I mean, personally, there, you have to see this at, at every angle, right? Like you say, you, you've brought up some good numbers, the, the city is growing, people that buy homes, they need the services. Fortunately, services, parks, they're costly right now, a lot, these parks, they, they cost money, and the good thing is that people are taking advantage of the parks. I see people enjoying the parks, walking all the time, kids playing all the time. So it is a benefit that, like you say, whoever buys into that neighborhood is going to get the benefit of having a park right there. I mean, nobody wants to, to raise any fees, of course, that's the last thing you ever want to do, but sometimes to keep up a city and provide services, it's just necessary. Definitely not a, I wouldn't recommend a drastic change, but I think a, a small one to keep up the demand and the recreation that we want, we're promoting health and everything, I think it's feasible to have a moderate increase.
I, I do, I, I know that we've been doing a lot of work on, you know, increasing utility of our existing parks, increasing physical activity and the impact that that has on our residents and our community. And so I think that it's very important that we continue to move in, in this area. I, I do think that, you know, when we think about, for example, communities that will have access to parks versus the ETJ, that is something also to consider, right? How many parks we are putting in, in, in hard to reach areas where, where obesity is perhaps the highest, right? Because those are our food deserts, those are the places that people are not having access to a multitude of recreational activities, and so I do want to find a balance there. I, I would not want to pass, as you said, like pass the cost down, especially to those residents that are having the, the most trouble finding affordable housing. But if we start to prioritize our parks, and we start to prioritize the way that we approach this, the way that we approach funding, and, and get strategic about the way that we develop our park planning, I'm, I'm fully in support of that. I, I really want to make sure that we do our part to make sure that our future generations are getting more physically active, and that we have places for them to be active, so...
You bring up a very good point, and it's the health of the community, I mean, the, the obesity rates here, and in border towns and here, and the diabetes, right? They're pretty high, so...
We have high diabetes.
And you would be the person to know this.
We have high diabetes rates, we don't have a lot of primary care providers, we don't have a lot of emergency care services, and so people are, our people are living longer, but they're living sicker. And so that's, that's a really important thing for us to consider, is that, you know, with all of the advances in, in general medicine, our people are living longer, but their quality of life is going down. And for those residents that are not able to travel out of town for medical care, it's, living healthier lives, it's, it's, it's a whole city thing, right? It's not just about personal behavior and personal responsibility, it's, it's a whole environmental thing that we need to consider.
Yeah, and I think one of the words that we haven't mentioned yet, but everything that we've talked about ties, is quality of life. You know, improving the quality of life from Eagle Pass, to be able to attract more businesses, more, you know, get some of our youth to come back after they go to school, our best and brightest, we have a hard time with rain drain, and I think a lot of that has to do with not having the level of parks and the amenities that you find in, in those very desirable side after cities, San Antonio, Austin, they have a ton of parks, a ton of trails, a lot of trees, a lot of shade, where, you know, so all those things come into play with that, and I think if we start making concerted efforts towards this, we could drastically improve the quality of life, which will bring up a lot of other areas of the community.
This is another item, or you're just seeking guidance, correct? We're not going to vote, we have to bring it back.
Yes, sir.
What do y'all think, if he proposes a five-year plan, and he gives us a better picture of what he's talking about, that we, we don't stick it, like you said, so drastically?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and with your five-year plan that you're suggesting, so we can get a better idea of what you...
Maybe bring in ordinance like that, that's very, very gradual, and, and takes that into account, and then we'll, we'll vote on it, on the next...
I think the big thing, if I could get the directive, I could ask for, from council, is what's our target? Because to, to make the five-year plan, I need to know, let's, we can do the research to figure out what are actual costs, we already have a lot of that. And then what we need to figure out is, what do we want to ask, essentially, the new homes, the new home buyers, what percentage?
I, I think the number you gave is pretty conservative, and it's the 1527, in my opinion. I don't think that's, obviously not 3, 4,000, that's too much, that, I think that, that number is not something that I, I think is fair.
Yeah, so I guess just, I want to, you know, maybe rephrase, so let's say the cost, maybe is, as an example, $5,000 per home to maintain our current level of parks acreage per population that we currently have. If it was the 5,000, what percentage of that, or is our target, is our goal for those new homes, hey, do we want to do 50% of that? Because right now, we're at 1,150, so that would be roughly 20%, 25% or in that range. You know, what is our goal to try to, to get to? Because I, I mean, or it could be 100, if we think, well, these new homes are coming in, they're the ones that are requiring the new demand, so some, some, some may say 100% of that should be on the new home, but I don't know, but so far from where we are, I don't think we're, we're close to that right now. So what target do you want the five-year plan to get to?
Because right now, you said you're close to 20%?
Roughly, it may be, you know, like in this example, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to quantify it, because this was only 96 lots, but it, it would be 8,000. I'm, I'm bringing that down, because I feel like more homes would be able to benefit from it, but we don't have the exact, so I'm, I'm roughly estimating 4,000 to 5,000, maybe closer, once we get a better picture of how many lot, per lot.
And right now, it's like 1,800, you said?
It's 1,100.
It's 1,100.
Why don't we, what if we move to 15, and then we look how, how that turns out, and then revisit the, like, scratch the five-year thing, let's revisit how that one's working out? Because what you're saying is, compute the five years right now, I mean, I, I can't come up with a percentage. Jesse, I see you shaking your head, you have any opinion on that?
Just, just a few points on this, because what, what makes this a lot more difficult is like the option between the, the land itself and the fee. We've talked about this before, how sometimes the land, we've had land for a long time, and we don't develop it, why? Because we don't have the money.
Sure.
So, you know, if there is, it, it really is at the city's discretion, right? Maybe we don't want to park there, and the developer wants to give us the land, and we choose to, to charge the fee. But it, it really goes back to, and it's going to be a topic that we discuss at the next workshop, and it has to do with the CIP, you know, what are those future plans, and what does that cost? And then figuring out from that cost, what's the income that we need to offset, and then going back to the percentage, what percentage of those costs need to be covered? So it, it's all together, you know, with, with the other topics that we're going to discuss, but that's the way I feel we need to evaluate it, because we don't know what our aim is, and what, how many parks are we talking about in the future? What's that goal, what does that five-year, 10-year plan look like for parks? So when we start talking about the CIP, I think, you know, we can incorporate, you know, those fees into it to calculate appropriately.
Can you get together with planning and come up with something?
We'll come back with a recommendation, sir.
So, I do think it's important for us to, to consider strategic placement of the parks, and then connectivity, right? So we, you had... So, uh, we, you had mentioned, uh, some, how San Antonio is, is, is essentially very well-connected, right? Um, and so right now, if, if we don't have connectivity between, between parks, right? Sometimes we're building these hike and bike trails that go nowhere, right? Or you just hike and bike up, up the same little piece of trail, right? So, um, I think it's important for us to, to think about that. Um, I, I know what would be important for me is maybe not offloading that onto the ETJ, but, uh, getting as close to the ETJ as possible. So looking at those outskirts of the city and figuring out, um, what it would look like and then also doing a variation in, in pricing, right? So maybe some of our lower-income families might not be able to contribute at the same rate that the higher-income families. So, uh, really looking at, at what that plan would look like in a way that we can get access to parks in a more equitable way and then also consider connectivity. I, I'm not sure if you can. I know that's a tall order.
It's a lot of work to, to put this, uh, together.
Yeah, because we actually need to look at also anything that we're, if we're going to revisit any annexations plans, especially when you're considering the ETJ. If we're going to be annexing another, then we need to be very cognizant of what we're wanting to do in regards to parks is I don't want to annex and then inspect all these parks and then we're throwing all that burden on the current city taxpayer. Cause that's unfair also. I understand that we need to be aware of, uh, people's different financial situations and stuff, but we also need to be aware of those that already reside in the city. We need to be fair to those as well.
And, and to Placido's point, you know, I think he said it really well is that, you know, when we're doing a project, somebody's paying for it, right?
Exactly.
So it's, it's either the user or it's the general taxpayer. And so figuring out, and that, that, this applies to several other fees that we're going to discuss in the workshop is, you know, there needs to be a determination as to, you know, what, what's that fairness point?
The user has to pay their fair share?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and, and also like maybe leveraging the opportunities that we already have. So I know that with, with the, the several different programs that have been presented to us on, um, the use of, uh, for example, like the, the, the new, um, the, the new, uh, tiders programs and stuff like that, maybe looking at different, uh, grant opportunities as well, finding ways to kind of meet somewhere halfway. Um, and, and that way we don't fully place the, the burden on, on, on not just you guys, right? But, um, I'm, I'm the big proponent of, you know, let's start growing our grants team. Um, I think that we've been really successful with, you know, what we've done so far, but maybe we can take it a little bit further if we further develop that team. And if we decide to make this a priority, you know, we can, we can head in that direction.
I, I don't know if any, are, are you kind of clear where we're going?
Someone, I think the biggest thing I needed to know was if, I think there is an agreement that the new homes, the new users creating the demands do need to pay their fair share.
Sure.
So that's, that's the first step.
That's the most important thing, right?
It's going to be figuring out what percent, how, how much of that, you know, how to work our way to that. So I think I got.
That's where you can get with finance and then.
I think I got enough of the directive, so we'll have something to be able to present a little more concrete
Perfect.
at a next future meeting.
Okay.
What they build, we have to take care, right? We maintain.
Yeah.
So I think it's more than fair that they pay
Absolutely.
their fair of the deal if it's going to be in their neighborhood. Cause then we're going to have to go after and rebuild after ten, fifteen years.
All the time.
So without any support other than the local tax, right?
Exactly.
Right? So the more, the better.
Okay.
I think.
All right.
Very good.
Anything else? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at seven oh nine PM. No action needed here, so we'll just give you those recommendations. Item four, public hearing on the request submitted by Juan and Maribel Salazar for the rezoning of Lot Twelve in Block Fifty-Five of Hill Chris Edition, Twenty-Ten Olive Street. From R One, First One Family Dwelling District to R Three A Apartment District, impossible action. We will go ahead and open this public hearing at seven ten PM.
Mayor Council, thank you. So we do have the applicants here, um, just to point that out. And there is ordinance item number fifteen that ties in with us in case we want to go ahead and do the public hearing and take the action. So for this item, which you just read the, the details of, um, the Salazar family who are here applying for this rezone at Twenty-Ten Olive Street to rezone from R One to R Three A. I will, I'll also mention, very early on, there is, um, opposition from nearby residents, so there is some, uh, controversy, I guess you could say, with, with this one. Um, it's a seventy-five-hundred square feet parcel, you know, developed, fully developed area. All the utilities are in place. Here's some site photos behind the Eagle Pass Housing Authority Building on Main Street. And this shows a master plan map and zoning district map. So you can see some different coloration, the colors tell you, tell us the zoning. So that's one thing that's, you know, if it was all essentially yellow, meaning single-family residential, maybe it wouldn't lend itself as much to, uh, a different type of use. In this case, we do have brown right in that same block. We do have greens and commercial, and then that's HEB on, on the, on the right there of the screen.
Well, are you, are you, you're looking at? The second one.
Yeah. So we have
The brown in the corner is?
Brown, signifying, uh, duplex or multifamily type. And so it's this lot, uh, the second one right next to this
The dotted.
authority where the dot is, if you're seeking to switch to apartment use and their plan is for a three-unit, three-one-bedroom unit development there. And so again, we s- we have green and another brown in this vicinity near Main Street and giving push for toward Bibb Street. This is HEB and apartment right here to the.
Three?
Big green.
You said three separate structures?
Three units. It would be two and one, like a duplex, two units, and then a separate, so they would all be one-bedroom units and it would be within two structure, two roofs.
Okay. And what, what was there before?
Six spaces?
A house?
It's currently a vacant, but it was previous, at one point, just a single family.
I know, before, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's always been residential for years there.
Yeah, it's a very established neighborhood.
So zooming out a bit, again, we're showing just the, the vicinity, so, uh, you can barely see a little bit of highlighting there where the lot is. We have blue, in this case, that's the mall area. We have some, uh, Main Street and Bibb, a lot of the green. And so some other apartments right in the vicinity. Another real important point, I'll try to make it as quick as I can, there's a huge movement for upzoning or allowing more, more use. Single-family and, and zoning requirements in general are a increased cost, basically is the, the most important thing to know. Having setbacks, front yard setback, side yard, rear yard, basically means you just need more land to build your house. Minimum lot sizing, all those things basically mean more cost for each person to be able to get into a home. And there's a lot of research and, and, um, stories, basically, a lot of the intent maybe when zoning was created many, many years ago was part of segregation, um, trying to keep people who wouldn't be able to have the means out of certain areas by making all these different requirements. So a lot of cities and states are moving away from single-family residential altogether. Some have eliminated it completely, where there's no such thing as single-family in their, in their whole city. Three states, Oregon, California, Maine, and, and like I said, some cities, like Houston does not have zoning, similar, like in the county, you can essentially build what, what you would like, where you'd like. And they, they have removed or eliminated single-family. It's, it's a controversial issue, another one of the fun things that, that we deal with, with our department. But, um, there's two sides to it. One is, it's a, you know, kind of the comment that was already made, established neighborhoods, the character of them, they've always been single-family. We, you know, what's term, what's called NIMBY, not in my backyard. It's kind of like, yeah, go ahead and do that somewhere else, we're fine with it, but don't do it around my neighborhood, don't change my neighborhood. You know, there's a lot of that. In, in some cases here, I did want to point out in, in this article I found through, uh, DNPR, one of many, this, you know, very discussed topic. Gainesville, Florida, removed the single-family, you know, the, where they changed to eliminate it, and then they got a lot of backlash. They reversed their decision and re, re-in, and established it. Another key, another important one I wanted to point out was in Arlington County, they had a long five-hour public comment, a hundred and fifty people. There was a, a lot of the, it was, it's a sharply divided argument and some of the things were mentioned were our street can't handle that, the neighborhood can't handle that, the school system can't handle that. Essentially what we're talking about is more density, more people in an area. The city infrastructure can't handle that, parking nightmare, fewer trees, overtaxed services, more impervious surface that could cause flooding, changing character in their neighborhoods. And they prefer that apartment buildings stay in other corridors. So again, it, it comes to that, like, nobody wants it near them, uh, but.
But it's already near them, right? In this?
Well, in this case, there's
Case.
right, there is some nearby. And in general, again, it's, it's, people are opening, cities and states are opening eyes to the, those requirements that don't allow this, make it more expensive to be able to afford housing. Being able to do more duplexes make, brings down the cost apartments, brings down more affordable options, just helps for that, that major issue. So again, it's one of those that depending on how you look at it.
Five letters came by.
But I wanted to just make those points. This is a very big topic that many cities are, you wouldn't even have to go through this rezone in some cities because they altogether eliminated the, uh, single-family rule. So, um, the last thing we'll talk about here is the twenty-five notices were mailed out to the budding property owners. Five were received in opposition. We don't typically get a lot of, uh, responses when we send these out, but in this case we did get five in opposition. In this case, three were all from one property owner that their home encompasses three lots. So, um, there is, there is opposition from, uh, nearby, uh, neighbors. Um, overall, just showcase one more time, in general, for, you know, my knowledge with, with planning and zoning is near these business areas where there's work opportunities and shopping opportunities and, you know, doctor's office, all those different things that you need in your day-to-day life. The closer to that is where you want more density. You want more people to not have to drive their vehicles and
Right.
and, and add more strain to the infrastructure. So based on its location, so close to HEB in the main and Bibb area, it's, you know, very, um, it's a very, I guess, prime area where you would want to see a little bit more density. Again, we wouldn't, we would hate, you know, changing the character of any area, but that's the, um, usually what you look at when you want to add density is in areas where people will be able to get to the, their everyday needs. So with all that, even, you know, looking at all things considered, um, I think maybe a duplex, just two units might be a little bit more suitable, but in this case, the applicant
That was my recommendation, yes. And, and because I'm always, uh, I'm not, I'm never against, uh, new construction, of course. Unfortunately, yes, you were, you're right about leasing, uh, the, the, that it's more affordable, but unfortunately for the last couple of months, it's even like a mortgage payment. I just leased a, an apartment, a two-bedroom apartment for fifteen hundred, you know, a month, which is outrageous. So this is how, I mean, right now, it's not a matter of, of affordability, it's just a matter of concern neighbors or, or within what area are we building the apartments? And again, uh, I'm not against it. Uh, the only concern there, because I usually talk to neighbors as well. I, I, I take, you know, their, their, um, opinions, uh, not lightly. So my rec, I mean, they didn't say even a dup- a duplex, but I mean, everything that it's around it, around that area, it's duplex. And the only concern that I'm, that I have mainly because I'm very familiar with this neighborhood is that they always have a clogged sewer line.
That's what I was.
So that's something that the more properties that are connected, probably we're going to have more issues. You know that tenants don't really care, uh, much about, um, taking care of the, the units. Unfortunately, not everyone, of course, I cannot generalize, but it's more of a different people coming in and out. You know, uh, being the difference of, of having a, a, a settled neighbor, I mean, it, it, but again, my only recommendation would be probably just not, my only concern was when I saw apartment zoning, which it was, oh, I mean, three or more. Um, yes, it is a smaller kind of street compared, or, or like the houses are a little bit more, uh, next to each other, and I understand the concerns and the, and the traffic because usually that street, it's, it's, whoever gets into that street, it's because they live there, uh, for, for years compared to others that are in the surrounding areas that are highly trafficked. And, uh, we have older homes or abandoned homes, so that's when we get excited about having a duplex or triplex because it just applies, or we have corner lots. Uh, in this case, I'm not against it. I, I just, my recommendation will be probably zoning to a duplex, I mean, tops. So
So that case.
You don't have a higher, I mean, you, you're getting at least one less, uh, occupancy there, a little bit of less traffic. And again, I, I support new construction, I support, um, you know, helping other citizens to actually get, uh, investment properties as well. But I guess that will be a little bit fair to everyone. And my main concern is the sewer problem because we're having two or three or four units and it's really bad in there.
Question, what did the, the Planning and Zoning Board, did they hear this issue?
They did, they approved.
Okay.
The recommendation, although it's not a clear-cut, easy one, but, uh, overall, based on that proximity to business areas, our recommendation was to approve here, although I think duplex probably is more suitable, but they did apply for this and I think we're still recommending. This is the public hearing part, so we're not necessarily doing the recommendation part yet, and the applicants are here, I don't know if we want to.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll open up, uh, for, to the public for any questions, concerns?
I have one question for you, Placido, because on the, on something that you displayed up here, you showed, where you had the, the, the color-coded lots, you had the brown next to, you said that there was?
Those are duplex.
But why in the aerial picture that you're showing on, on our file, it's a, a huge empty lot, it looks like two lots? I, I don't know if I'm seeing what's the same.
Uh, one is facing Pecos and the other one.
Oh, it's the street? It's the One's facing Olive, one's, what is this block?
There we go.
So the, the owners own both, there's a lot, a corner lot.
Oh.
And then the second lot, same owners, the Salazar family own both of those two. So one of them, the one that has the brown shading on the corner is already zoned duplex. And now they're, they're looking to, uh, rezone the second lot that they also own.
Okay. Cause I was, I was assuming that it was like already constructed, that's the way it was.
So it is, it is two lots, yeah, it's pretty big?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone in the public that wishes?
So now we're going to wish?
So now there's like, so they're wanting to only develop the one that's not? Is that what they're wanting to do?
They're, they're looking to develop both lots.
Okay.
They're still, based on the zoning.
Are you Ms. Salazar?
Yes, Maribel Salazar.
Hi, nice to meet you.
See.
See.
Okay. Yes, the reason why we put the petition for the three-one-bedroom apartment is actually, I've been working for twenty-eight years for elderly's and they have a very hard time finding one-bedroom apartments.
True.
And usually it's, uh, not a couple, they're mostly widows, either him or her as a widow. And say ninety-five percent of them don't drive, they depend on transportation. And to me, it's a very good idea to one-bedroom, uh, or even efficiency, we could do an efficiency, whoever they, they tell us how to do it. And it's very close to, um, Centenario, which there's a transportation, they're very close to HEB, like you mentioned, doctor's office. And, um, to me, well, it's a safe place for them too, not out of city limits and access to everything they need, you know, for their daily living. And like I tell you, if we build like a two, a duplex or a two-bedroom, you get, uh, like a three or four family members versus one family member per unit, which is probably three people that are going to live there without a vehicle. Maybe once in a while their family visits them, but mostly their provider is mostly there with them.
Yeah.
You know, so traffic and regarding, um, vehicles or the parking space, I don't think there's going to be an issue. I could tell you, I work at a daycare, say ninety-five percent of the people there don't drive.
No, fair enough.[1763.14]
percent of the people there don't drive, because of their age or because of the health issues. And I think it will be a good idea, if it's approved, at least, you know, one, well, one bedroom for, you know, for each of them. Like I tell you, mostly, all of my clients, they're at the daycare scenario, most of them are widow, so they live by themselves.
Yeah, that's...
And it's very, very hard for them to find a one-bedroom. It's, I constantly call landlords, I've been working there for a long time, and nobody has but one bedroom. And sometimes I use vouchers, and I actually myself registered ourselves with Section Eight, so it's for...
That was my next recommendation, Section Eight are looking for.
For, for the other lot that you have there, next to it, what do you plan on doing there?
We were planning on doing another three, you know, for the same reason, but it depends on, on the council.
It says, on the thing, it says three one-bedrooms and slash one duplex, one apartment, that's why I guess, I think that's why...
Because they're separate, I guess that, that's why they want it. There's one in front, one individual, one bedroom, and then...
And then one that's just split in the double.
Yeah.
Also because of the fire hazards, I mean, they require, if they're all together, they require the fa, the fire...
And actually, the, the ones that you approved two years ago, actually, I registered ourselves with Section Eight, and it works very well, and like I tell you, it's, you don't get involved with any of other family members except with them. So, I would really appreciate it if you really consider this, this opportunity that we might have, that our customers and you pass.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else from the public? Counsel, any additional comments? If not, we can close and move to the item where we get to vote. No rush.
I was just, no, that's fine, I don't have any comments on that. The only comment that I have is, is what Councilman Cruz brought up about the drainage and stuff like that. I wouldn't like to see if there's any information, maybe from Water Works, if we can get some kind of information. I mean, that would just feel comfortable, because I don't want, I mean, just considering what she just said, I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity for them and to provide for the residents. I just don't want them to have this huge investment, and then you're having an issue with sewer. I mean, that's the last thing they want to be having in the residents either, but I just want to make sure that we have...
No, and I said it upfront because I, I'm...
Because I've had those concerns by people, yeah, in that area. I just want to make sure that we're not inviting them trouble to the, the tenants, the landlords, or, you know, or any of the residents in that area. That's my only concern, you know, is that.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, when he says, I mean, you know, I can't be any more pro-business than I already am, you know, it's, but, I mean...
No, we need new, new buildings.
I just want to make sure, exactly. Because it's very hard for people to find places to live.
So, I do have a question. I know that you gave some general, kind of like, general nationwide comments on, on why people would oppose this, but what, did you hear anything specific from those five response, or technically three responses that you got?
It was, it was very in line with what I read in those national.
Okay.
It was...
Same sort of...
I'm assuming that nobody is here, right, the people that opposed?
I believe so.
Okay.
But yeah, that, I wanted to put those comments in there, because it was almost word for word with the same kind of concerns they had, which was the sewer, you know, the infrastructure not being able to handle it, those, those things.
All right, well...
I mean, I like that it's a one-bedroom and that...
Cool. We can go ahead and, let's close the public hearing first. We're going to close it at seven twenty-eight PM, and then we'll jump to item number fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Fifteen, which is a consideration on possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of Lot Twelve and Block Fifty-Five of Hillcrest Edition, twenty-ten Olive Street, from R-one, first one family dwelling district to R-three-A apartment district, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Now, and, now we can consider a motion, if any, anyone wishes to do one.
I would like to make a motion to, to, to approve, to, to proceed with the recommendation and, and approve.
As stated by the, okay, we have a, a motion by, by Councilman Diaz. Do we have a second?
No, no second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilwoman Cruz, discussion?
I, I personally, I would like to have that information that I mentioned about Water Works' comments, to make sure, to safeguard everyone involved in the project, not only the, the...
To also to benefit them.
Yeah, it's to benefit the Salazar's, because if we approve it, it's not, we might not be doing them a favor.
We'll be having to fix that problem.
Yeah.
Would you like to bring that item back or approve with a...
Wait. This is an ordinance, so it has three readings, so this will be reading the first time, so you can bring it back.
We have time to protect the, both parties.
Okay.
We'll get that research from Water... Yeah, so we, we have, we have a motion, a second, we can always come back, right? Because it's...
We should need two more readings with us, so we can bring that information.
Discussion, we, we have discussion by Mayor Potem Davis.
If that's what you all want.
The comments, well taken, and we'll take a vote right now, all in favor of said motion?
I'm going to abstain until I get the information.
Okay, we have four in favor, Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, myself, Councilwoman Cruz, and Mayor Potem Davis abstains. All right. We'll go to item number five. Public hearing on the request submitted by Ruben de Los Santos for the rezoning of Lot Seven and Eight in Block Forty-eight and a half of Hillcrest Edition, three fifty-five Brazos Street, from B-one Neighborhood Business District to R-three-A Apartment District, closing of public hearing. We'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-one PM.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what you have before you is, again, a rezon application submitted by Ruben de Los Santos, who's also the property owner, location at three five-five North Brazos Street, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the parcel from B-one Neighborhood Business District to R-three-A Apartment District. Parcel size is fifteen thousand nine hundred square feet, currently vacant, zoned as B-one, and the proposed use would be two detached buildings housing four families. Here you have an aerial of the site. Some site photos, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area.
It's almost, yeah.
Across from, it's pretty much in the same vicinity.
It's like a block over and down.
Yeah, from what, I'm sorry?
From, it's like, a kind of across from the...
Like caddy for the one we just...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Like backyard, almost, but down the street.
Let me go there. Here you have a preliminary site plan, which is not, they're not approving the site plan, just approving the, or recommending approval of the, of the rezon.
See, as you can see in here, this was it, that was the, that's like...
Right now, it's just land.
Yes, it's vacant.
See, on this one, you get a, it's got a map on it.
So, you have, here you have the master plan and the zoning district maps. As you can see, it's in the vicinity of the previous one.
Yeah, and, and you said the plan is two detached buildings, like two bedrooms?
Two duplexes?
Two duplexes, basically?
It's two detached, two duplexes.
Okay. Are there any close by, similar?
I'm sorry?
Are there any close by, similar? I know that this property we just discussed.
Yes, it's in, in the vicinity, there is.
Did I see it wrong, or is it, there was a already foundation there?
There's a, it's a parking lot, existing parking lot, owned by Dr. de Los Santos. So, his clinic is off of Main Street.
Okay, so then I, I saw the wrong...
But it hails this way.
Yeah.
Gotcha. What, what's the recommendation?
Our recommendation is to, actually, we did send out twenty-five notices to the abiding property owners, and we received, two were returned in opposition and one was undeliverable. So, the recommendation is for council to approve.
And, and again, my question is before, Planning and Zoning Board, what was their decision on this?
They recommended approval for council to approve.
And the opposition, what was their...
It's pretty much the same as the previous one.
It's the same person, same persons.
Sure.
It's two of the same people. There's a third one, but...
And I totally understand when you guys say that, that this is, there's good points, right, on, on both?
On both sides.
But there is a shortage, yeah.
No, I mean, it's like, I mean, if you think about it, like, the positive side of the one that we just discussed, and this one is like the proximity to Main Street, and it's all sidewalks, so if they're, if they have a disability, I mean, you know, they're able to access that, and there's like a bus stop and stuff, I mean, I see it. Like I said, my concern is just what I just said a little while ago, I'm, so you already know where I'm going on this one, so...
These, these, these structures, they still need to pass, obviously, like inspection and be approved, and so...
I just don't want them to invest all this money and have a problem with the sewer halfway down the project.
I, I, I agree.
And thank you for, for that information.
Yes.
I was not aware of that situation, but, yeah, we'll bring that, we'll bring that information back.
I mean, we've had these calls, I don't know on you, but I've had these calls like way before I even knew about this. I mean, so I've had to have conversations with Water to see what they can do, and they go out and they help them and stuff, but, like I said, we, I want to know if there's something in place that's going to remedy this, because it's not something that we need to be, they as investors and the residents, you know, don't need to be dealing with this very often. That's why I want to make sure, I want to make sure that we're putting something in place to protect all of it.
So, this is...
Let, let's see if anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this item? Counsel, any other?
I think it's similar to the previous one, so...
Let's go ahead and, and close the, the public hearing at seven thirty-six PM, and then we'll jump to item number sixteen.
Sixteen, consideration on possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of Lot Seven and Eight in Block Forty-eight and a half of Hillcrest Edition, three fifty-five Brazos Street, from B-one Neighborhood Business District to R-three-A Apartment District, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Diaz, discussion, all in favor? We have four in favor, Councilwoman Cruz, myself, Councilman Diaz, and Councilman Garcia.
And an abstain.
And, and...
For the same reason.
David's abstains. Thank you. So, it passes. I'm scrolling. We'll go ahead and move to item number six. Public hearing on the request submitted by Four DLS Properties LLC for the rezoning of property legally known as being eleven point sixty-seven acres, the remainder of the twelve point sixty-seven acres tract described in conveyance document to Four DLS Properties LLC, recorded in volume eighteen seventy-seven, page three twenty-two of the Maverick County Official Public Records, Maverick County, Texas, from R-two, second one-family dwelling district to industrial district, and closing of public hearing and possible action. We will go ahead and open this public, public hearing at seven thirty-seven PM.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
So, you have before you, again, another rezon applicant and property owner being Four DLS Properties LLC, location at twenty twenty-seven Microstar Way. The request is to rezone parcel from R-two, second one-family dwelling district to industrial district, to allow for the expansion of the Microstar building, existing building. Current use is vacant and undeveloped. The proposed use is for the expansion of Micro, again, Microstar Building. Here you have the aerial map of the site. It does a, or a residential subdivision known as Lewis Farms Estates.
Mm-hmm.
Here are some photos, sites, site photos. I'm sure you're familiar with the area.
Project, that's kind of, great jobs, great...
Here you have a, a site plan, better zoomed in plat, plan, I'm sorry.
Will this affect the homes in any way?
There, we did send out notices to the abiding property owners, and there were, let's check, two were, were received as undeliverable. There's no opposition, no...
What's the recommendation?
To answer Mr. Garcia's question, there is, is it twenty feet?
Because there was supposed to be a buffer, right?
Twenty feet is the, the buffer placement?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Six, six zero?
Six, zero.
A setback.
So, yeah, one key point we'll show here...
There, there's a condition, there are permanent sixty feet.
It's not working.
But that was addressed from the very beginning, before they did the first part?
Yeah. Yeah, it's sixty-foot utilities, and that's back there. So, it's, and there's another condition in our recommendation that we'll read out.
So, when I illustrate a, a condition that we're going to talk about on the left, we're asking for a sixty-foot setback to be placed on the replat. There will be a subsequent replat that comes along with this, that will merge two lots into one for this proposed expansion of Microstar. And so, there's currently a lot of utility lines back there abiding between the residential and, and this industrial. And so, it's creating a natural buffer where there's not going to be any work or buildings where there's various utility lines, but just in the event that one day those utility lines potentially moved, we're asking that a permanent setback also be placed on the plat, just to make sure that it doesn't get too close to those residents, so that's, that's how we're trying to make sure they're protected. So, there are already going to be a buffer with those utilities, but the setback will also permanently help with that. So, the condition is going to be included about that.
It's right there.
What's the recommendation?
Can you make that clear, the condition?
Yes.
Because I think you were kind of talking over there. I'm sorry?
No, for him to restate.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and read it for you, so that we state it for the record as well. So, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is to recommend that the city council prepare and adopt an ordinance granting a zoning ordinance change from R-two to, to industrial district for property legally defined as eleven point sixty-seven acres, the remainder of a twelve point six-seven acre tract described in conveyance document to Four DLS Properties LLC, recorded in volume eighteen seventy-seven, page three twenty-two of the Maverick County Official Public Records, Maverick County, Texas, which is, which will also be recognized as twenty twenty-seven Microstar Way, with the condition that a permanent, a permanent sixty feet setback be established along the length of the north boundary abiding a residential subdivision.
I was trying to find for your reading, I'm sorry. I was scrolling really fast, because I was trying to hear also, because I was listening, but okay, I'm trying to find it out. But no, I mean, if, so basically, we're, we're redoing what we have before, with that, I mean, it's the same buffer, essentially, or?
We're adding...
Adding more.
The, the thing is, you typically want to have a, a gradual change. Industrial typically is not going to be right next to a residential subdivision, but in this case, that buffer of utilities already there, and we're, we're asking for the setback to be basically a second protection, to make sure there remains a buffer between the two.
I mean, there won't be an, an issue like a noise and stuff like that. Is that what you're, you're concerned?
Yeah, you know, I mean, anything, maybe eighteen meters of stuff, you know, bothering people, but sixty feet is quite a big thing.
Anyone in the public that, that has any comments, anything on this item?
We don't, really we have, not we can, we have Mr. de Los Santos in the audience.
Did you need to add anything, or?
Mr., I don't...
With regards to specifically...
Okay, if you want to...
If you want to...
I mean, if there's anything that you needed to add to it, or?
Oh, yeah, just to, to build on a little bit of what the conditions and...
If you want to speak to the mic, please.
Could you go to the site plan, please?
Okay, so, oh, so, can you back up? So, part of this design of what we wanted to make sure that we had is that there was a large step grow, uh, step barrier, so to speak, from here. So, when we're looking at exactly how far away the actual building, so to speak, will be, it's much larger than this sixty, sixty foot easement. The building itself, if we're looking at it, is probably going to be a hundred and eighty feet, and with the way that the construction of the building is, the only operation is here. In this area, it's pallet drying, so we'll only have forklift traffic and warehousing here, nothing operational. Additionally, we've agreed with the planning department to put in a fence that will limit line of sight, sound, and light sound, and, yeah, sight sa, sight sound and light. Additionally, this road right here is not used or for anything else but fire department access. So, we won't have any tractor, tractor-trailer traffic or service trucks going through there at all.
There's like no loading dock activity?
No, sir, the only loading dock activity is right here and right here. Yes, sir, correct. You, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from anyone or counsel? If not, we'll go ahead and...
No.
We'll, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-five PM.
We'll, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-five P M. And then we can jump to item number.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, correct. Seventeen, consideration on possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification being eleven point sixty-seven acres. The remainder of the twelve point sixty-seven acres tract described in conveyance document to Four D L S Properties LLC recorded in volume eighteen seventy-seven, page three twenty-two of the Maverick County Official Public Records, Maverick County, Texas, from R two, second one-family dwelling district to one industrial district. Finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Before the recommendation, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Potam Davis, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion.
Go ahead.
Discussion.
Okay, it just a recommendation and, and this has nothing to do with the zoning. I mean, I completely agree. There's no, nothing wrong with it. Just by looking at the plat, can we take it, is it still time to take it to executive session just for an opinion on something else on the plat? Or we can just still make some changes on the plat later on of just a, a rec? I was in the meeting and I know.
I'm okay with sending my motion to table and.
And to, yeah, I mean, no, I'm, we're gonna, I mean, it's, it's fine. But it's a separate issue, but there is a legal, yeah, there is a legal question that we just need to clarify so that there is no.
The replat will be coming forward, I believe, the thirteenth of this month.
Also, we will discuss it.
To P N Z, I'm sorry.
You can, you can take it back, it's okay. I don't have a problem. I mean, we can bring it back out anyways.
May I can expedite this if, if the court, if, if the council will allow me? So, you know, as you know, there's different moving parts taking place, right, that are up in the air, including the, the extension of Patsy Win. And so, and looking at this replat, we're only, the council's only considering the issue of rezoning right now. So you can, our legal recommendation would you be to be able to move forward on the rezoning classification. But in visiting and some of the, some of the folks up here have actually been at some of these meetings that have taken place with respect to the extension of the Microstar Way or Patsy Win, however you want to call it, so they can connect either way. So the only comment that we would express at this time that we were visiting with Councilwoman Cruz was.
Cannot suggest anything.
Correct. So that we, right now, if you look at page fifty-seven on, on your screen, it shows the road, Microstar Way, ending at a cul-de-sac.
Right.
And so the only point that we would like to clarify so that we can make this distinction as we move forward into the extension is that that road, it would, or legal council's recommendation, that it be extended to the end of the property line. Because if you look at that same page fifty-seven under the notes at the bottom, whatever is a right-of-way, whatever is considered a roadway, under the zone, under this replat, whenever the council does consider it, it's actually dedicated to the public and to the city. And so if we just show and continue to show that replat ending with the cul-de-sac, then there's going to be a question as to whether it was meant to, the road was meant to extend all the way up to the property line. And so that's the only point that I wanted to express to Ms. Cruz and visiting with the city manager, if you saw, it was with screen over here. That was the point, that when the replat does come, we would ask that that change be contemplated and to show the, the Microstar Way going all the way to the end of the, of the, of the property line, to, to the north. I mean, if I'm looking at it to the end, you, you follow me to the end of where the blue line lies at the top?
So again, if that's included, since what I was telling them, yes, it's here, shown. But since this is, this item has only to do with the zoning.
Correct.
I have no problem with continuing and approving. And on this matter, if it's included, then I have to abstain and, and because I was at the meeting and we already discussed this.
There's no action, correct. This is not the time. We only wanted to put it on the record so that there could be some.
He wanted to disclose it.
Some, some communication with respect to it. And then we're also, Mr. De Los Santos has been gracious enough to cooperate with legal and with administration and the furtherance of these discussions because they own additional land and we're going to have to then connect the last little strip to the Lipson donation that they did for the extension of, of, of the Patsy Win route.
And we're, where those items are pending and it'll be coming, coming soon to the.
To P N Z.
P N Z.
July the thirteenth and for council, August the first.
Yeah, but at least this already gives planning, the council, as well as a developer, ample upfront notice of what the, the council is contemplating and making sure that they just make that small modification to show the road going all the way to the end of the property.
So with that said, I, I have no problem with continuing with the motion taken and.
We had a, a motion, we had a second, we discussed it, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for that. Item seven, public hearing of the request submitted by Ernesto Fuentes for the rezoning of lot six in block three of Buena Vista, unit number four, nine eighty-three Colorado Street, from R three duplex district to R three A apartment district, closing of public hearing and possible action. We will open this public hearing at seven fifty-one P M.
Thank you, Mayor. Another rezone application submitted from, from L and E Real Estate Rentals LLC, also the property owner. Location again, nine eighty-three Colorado Street. The request is to rezone parcel from R three duplex district, R three A apartment district to allow for construction of a four-unit multifamily dwelling. The parcel is, size is seven thousand square feet, existing use is vacant. So here you have a site photo currently vacant. You do have, as you can see, you do have another multifamily. Here is a preliminary site plan.
Thing is, it's easier.
Yeah, it is all apartments around.
And here's.
No parking issues, right?
No parking issues, it, it, the, the, whatever is submitted, they have to comply with parking, maneuvering inside the property, detention, retention, landscaping, so forth.
Again, this is only rezoning, so.
And again, you, this, here depicts nearby apartments.
So they're pretty just doing what they did a lot next to it, right?
Same owner. Here you have the copy of the master plan and the zoning district map. We did send out twenty-two notices and we received zero in, in return. Which you like from you.
None in opposition?
None in opposition. We didn't receive any letters in return.
And P N Z also approved?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this item? Counsel? We'll go ahead and close.
Oh, but you have Colorado Street, oh, but then the, the building itself. We're just trying to figure out the entrance.
Yeah, can you give, can you give the council additional information on how they plan to access the, the parking?
Okay.
They're the same owners, right? I mean, it's the same owner, so they're going to have.
We talked to the owner, and again, this is only the zoning, so in order to get their actual permits, they would need a dedicated easement or some kind of modification that allows. Because the plan they want to try to do is going through the other property from Second Street through. But again, that would require a flat amendment or some change allowing permanent access to that property. And the applicant is aware.
Okay.
So yeah, once again, this is the zoning part and then we'll talk about the planning issue, the purpose, okay? So I'll make a motion to.
Well, it's a public hearing, so if, we can go ahead and close the public hearing at seven fifty-four P M.
If we change it and then, let me just ask a question because this is something that I'm not real familiar with. If we allow it and then we come back and we're not able to figure out a way for him to use it, then.
You're, you're still surrounded by, by.
I want to make sure they're going to be able to do what they need to do.
And you have an entrance by Colorado directly. The thing is that the layout that he actually did was to, I guess, to have a better.
Better use of the land.
Use of the land based that he's the owner of the next door.
Mr. Fuentes, I, I believe the property owners here, maybe you can clear up some of our questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So what I attempted to do here is pretty much make the best use of the land. And the idea is to mirror what we've done here in the corner and, and allow for, for this to be the entry and exit. And like Mr. Maeda said, I would be giving an easement, an entry easement to, to myself. And, you know, obviously, planning department always says, well, what happens if one of the properties gets sold? So it will be sold subject to the easement and it would be still the right-of-way.
Stay a right-of-way.
Correct.
So in the future, so that, therefore, that's why there is no need of replating as one. There's going to keep, you're going to keep it to separate properties.
That was my question, I was going to ask that.
So that's why with, with the right-of-way, it's like you're already giving access to whoever sells the property later on.
Correct, it'll be recorded, it'll be recorded with county records and it'll be, if it, if it does get sold, it'll be subject to.
Right, the conditions.
And Colorado doesn't have a, a way to go in?
Yes, on this side, but the thing is that he wants the same layout. If not, he will only have access to the back.
It'll be basically like where the, where his fifty is.
I, I did a, like another layout and this building gets pushed back and there's parking here and, and it, it just looks very weird.
It feels like right there, the way it looks, it looks like, yeah, it, it makes sense.
Symmetry, it makes sense since there's an entry over here.
Is it the same style as the ones in the front?
It's going to be the same style, townhome style. The only difference is these are currently facing Second Street and this would be facing Colorado. So the, the front would be, this would be the front and this would be the front facing Colorado, but it would be the same style.
Mr. But would you be asking for a reference for this one or setbacks?
Yes, yes, yes. That, it's, it's still very preliminary, but I, I think the, the actual setbacks would end up being ten in the back and, and ten in the front, very similar to what we have in the, in the existing one right now.
Well, that answers the questions, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback. We'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing at seven fifty-seven P M. And we will go ahead and move to item eighteen. Consideration on possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of lot six in block three of Buena Vista, Buena Vista, unit number four, nine eighty-three Colorado Street, from R three duplex district to R three A apartment district. Finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion on item eighteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz and a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Let's go to item eight, public hearing on the subdivision variance requested submitted, requests submitted by Terratec for City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-three, Article four, section twenty-three dash sixty-one, A four, regulating two points of vehicular access for ingress and egress to the preliminary plat of Home Two Suites subdivision. Closing of public hearing and possible action. This public hearing will be open at seven fifty-eight P M.
The applicant here is Tech Services.
And this is a hotel.
This is the Home Two Suites development location at thirty-three eighty-sixth East Main Street. The item at hand is to request a variance from the two points of egress. Our subdivision, fairly recent ordinance does require any subdivision to have two. So while this is just one lot for one development, technically a new subdivision because it's a replat out of a larger. And so they are asking for that exemption based off of the adjacent property. You see there to the left, this would be where Bob Rogers continues into that dirt road. It is privately owned. It's not a street to where they could, they could potentially negotiate at some point, but at this point, they can't make a public right-of-way to connect to there even if, if they wanted to at this point. So their, their one option is just the abutting towards two seventy-seven for their ingress and egress. Here's a site plan of what they plan to do, so this would be two seventy-seven here. This would be the private road dirt path that we talked about. So the main entrance will be here.
Oh, closer to town.
Closer into town towards, closer towards the sports complex. And there will be a driveway opening here for the potential of a future second ingress egress. If that road ever becomes a public right-of-way, it would be easily connected to that and then have that additional connectivity. And honestly, the better flow would be for.
Because there's a light there.
People will be able to use a light to get out. So traffic, there is some concerns about how the, the traffic will get out, the peak traffic times here. There are a lot of times backed, backed up traffic. But at, at this point, that's the only possible way to get in and out.
How I didn't know that.
So if this is a public hearing part, but if there's no question, we can.
It's a recommendation.
To grant the approval for the variance from two points.
I mean, it's the only option, right?
Correct.
It's a public hearing, so any public opinion or concerns? Counsel?
I'm just concerned with the traffic there and that light that's lit there.
I think we all are right.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do at this point in time.
Yeah, the, the goal would be eventually that they can connect, come out of that light. And then once other development comes, because all this area is, is undeveloped this time, we would look for connectivity between properties, like where businesses, you can stay on the private property without having to go to the road. And that would allow for you to find a, a better exit point, but at this point, there's really no other options.
Yeah, thanks.
So we have to go all the way?
Okay, any other comments?
And they already got the, well, I don't know if they've done this yet, it's not really on your concern, but they've already got access approved from Tech dot to get. Cut through there?
Well, cut through where?
Because they're going to have to make their own, another area.
This driveway is.
Yeah, that's something they have to get access from Tech dot.
Yes, there's potential for right-only, but Tech dot has already received, received.
They've already got, okay.
Because we are working on the permitting as well.
Did Mr. McGee look at that already?
Yes. Do you want him to address the?
Mr. McGee, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Danny McGee, city engineer.
You have an opinion as to this?
I'm sorry?
You have a, an, an opinion as to the recommendation?
It's, it's a real tough situation. I think what we're doing is kind of the best that we can do for that area. My, my concern is, and working with Tech side, is, is coming in and out of that. Almost certainly have to be like a righty, right out.
Sir, I, I mean, I know that you want to, I mean, they, the owners want to take as much from the space and of course we want to move forward, but at the same time, I mean, the safety of the ingress and egress, we need to, I mean, it needs to be considered. Why not taking out the restaurant part and having a second exit?
But at, at this point, that second exit is kind of a moot point because it's just a dirt road. It needs to be developed to be a, a paved road to utilize the traffic signal there.
Are you saying to come, another one to come down here?
Exactly, instead of the restaurant, so you're, I know, I mean, you're sacrificing. The what?
Tech side wouldn't give another driveway that close.
It's too close, it's too close.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a stream right here that needs to be developed somehow over, over time. And that, that's why they're planning to have another driveway here.
And that, that was my, I mean, my other question, where do you exit there to?
Right now, you don't.
But what is it?
Is that dirt road, which is Bob Rogers, basically where the light is?
It's one of those, hopefully one day it's developed by somebody and it connects to it.
I think it will be once it's built, yeah.
It, it only makes sense. I mean, you have a traffic signal, you can utilize and make a left turn because these people are going to have a.
You see this one a little?
It's right there.
It's, it's going to be impossible to come out.
So that's where the light is, correct?
The light's on this side.
Oh, no, so that's going to be a road eventually.
Yes.
Yeah, that's something, it'll eventually become a road, it's just not one now.
Oh, okay, okay, but yeah, I mean, there's a safe, I mean, we, eventually, there will be a road there.
Yes.
That's what you were saying, that probably right now it'll be a right-in, right-out into the hotel right now because there's no other way for them, for them to turn across left is going to be.
Right.
A nightmare anyways.
Yeah, it, it's a very delicate situation. I think they've done the best they can with the property as it is.
Right now, our only option, like you say, is that, right?
Yeah.
On fire, I mean, fire marshal, it's fine with it.
They have the, they have a perimeter.
They can go around and turn back down.
As long as, as we agree that there's going to be another exit, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Eventually.
Eventually, okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at eight oh five P M. And, and now we can consider a motion on this item.
What number was it, number?
This was.
Number eight. Number eight.
No, but we moved to.
Oh, no, no, it's just.
It's just there, okay, sir, I wasn't sure if there was. Okay, I made the motion to that effect.
We have a a motion to approve the recommendation by Mayor Potem Davis. Do we have a second? No second?
Oh.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz, discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
Apologize.
No, it's okay, thank you. The next items are in the consent agenda and it's items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Ah, you beat me. I was for the restroom.
I would ask counsel, if you've had a chance to review this item, does anyone wanna take any of these items out to be discussed individually? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Potem Davis. Do we have a second?
I'll have a second.
Second by Councilwoman Cruz and these are all. Yeah, and discussion, all in favor, we have a four in favor and Mr. Diaz abstains.
Mr. Stark, you waited for a long time.
Okay, the the next is item fourteen, monthly reports, we're gonna go through each department. Stop me if you have any.
I'm gonna go to the restroom right there.
Okay. Stop me if you have any questions. Bridge, economic developments, engineering, finance, fire, human resources, library, marketing, municipal courts, parks and rec, planning and building, police code enforcement, security, animal control, public works, and the tax office. Thank you all very much, we've been doing a great job. Everyone's working together, efficient, good stuff. We did the fifteen through eighteen. So item nineteen, we'll go to nineteen, consideration on possible approval of an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two to adjust citywide revenues and appropriations to fund current year commitments. Finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, counsel, good afternoon, it's pretty straightforward. One of these, the the first item that we're gonna discuss, we actually took action on about two meetings ago and it had to do with the L E D conversion of the streetlights. We did mention that we do have access in our sales tax revenues and that we were gonna use those to fund that conversion. So the total estimated excess is actually four hundred and ten thousand dollars, so two hundred and ten thousand for the conversion and the remaining two hundred thousand we're requesting to use for the G I S system. G I S is something that we've been looking at doing for years and since the funding is available, you want to go ahead and take care of that?
It will be three.
The the other changes have to do with title changes. So titles are approved through the annual budget, so when titles are gonna be changed, it does have to come to council as an ordinance. These are just title changes, there is no changes in duties, there are no changes in pay associated. It just, it's just clarifying how the department would like to have the organization. So the first change is just changing the titles of the three lieutenants to police captains and then the operations managers in library and in H R, classifying them as assistant directors. Again, they're already doing the duties and just so that the hierarchy is clear to everybody, it's just, that's just clarification. So again, no changes in pay, no changes in the duties and the job description, just the titles themselves.
I think this budget amendment is great because people have been asking for, on the light issue, just yesterday, people were saying, hey, we need more light and this is gonna convert all the lights, right, Mr. Budo, to L E D?
All the A E P lights, we do have lights inside City of El Mestra, Rio Grande, so those are, we're still working to see how we can get those to L E D, but this is gonna be A E P lights.
Excellent, excellent, okay.
For the recommendations to approve?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz, a second by Councilwoman Cruz, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. It's a good one, right, Jim?
Yeah, his lighting is a, is a good detriment.
It's a, it's a big one, I'm very happy that we're gonna do that. Okay, number twenty, consideration on possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving guidelines for Texas Community Development Lot Grant Program for Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program.
Mayor, counsel, so the city was awarded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a housing rehabilitation program. This specific program was approved in the downtown area. One of the things that I really wanna go into before we get into the actual guidelines, you know, just to ease any questions as to why this area. So C D B G funds are for low-income communities. City Eagle Pass is no longer a low-income community, we are considered a moderate income community. The only reason we qualify, the only way we qualify for these funds is specific census tracts that are considered low-income within the community. So most census tracts within the city do not qualify for these funds. And so the the area that is the lowest is the downtown area, so that that is how that area is defined. So the guidelines themselves are basically a template from the state. We just have certain items that we need to discuss that are really at council's discretion as to how we're gonna evaluate the applications. But this program offers up to fifty thousand dollars to rehabilitate single-family owner-occupied homes within the downtown area. The objective is to improve substandard housing units up to HUD Section Eight of existing housing quality standards. So in order to be eligible for this program, the household has to have an income less than eighty percent of the area, meaning family income. So there you have the family sizes and then the maximum incomes for for those. They must also be able to provide proof of ownership, they must be current on property taxes or be on an approved deferral program and they must have insurance and blood insurance applicable. So the the map setting the boundaries, it's from Main Street to Leona Street and from Commercial Street to Ceylon Street. That is tract ninety-five oh five, block three. So the scoring criteria, this is a scoring criteria that we've used in previous housing programs that we have, we have done, have been a part of three. And so we focus on two main components, disability in veterans and then age. So for an applicant where they have a documented physical disability, where the home needs changes to accommodate that disability, the scoring system gives five points per person to a max of ten points. And for an applicant where there's a U S active-duty military or a veteran, it's up to fifteen points. And then for age, if there is members of the the household that are less than eighteen, it's five points per person to a maximum of ten. And if there's members of the household that are sixty-two years and older, it's ten points per person on a maximum of twenty. So this is a fairly straightforward scoring system that results in ties often. And so the tiebreakers are the the household that has the highest beneficiaries, number of beneficiaries. And then if there's still a tie after that, then it's the lowest per capita income of the household. Really, this is up to council, if there are other elements that you would like us to include in evaluating these these applications. But we like to keep it fairly simple, as simple as possible, because it it can get complicated very quick.
Can you show us the streets again?
So Main Street to Leona Street and then Commercial to Ceylon.
How many homes can we benefit with three hundred and fifty thousand?
So the the grant is three hundred and fifty thousand, but we are committed to match twenty percent or seventy thousand, so we have four hundred and twenty thousand. And it's up to fifty thousand, some homes may not require the entire amount. So you're looking between seven, maybe up to ten, depending, you know, if they all max out at fifty, then, you know, we can only do it.
That makes a big difference still.
Yes.
Is it only in that area? Because I think it's just.
Yeah, it's, I see like a small area.
But it's because of the the demographic and the populations.
Because, I mean, I'm trying to picture on my head, I mean, I'm I'm trying to drive over those streets and and there's not a lot of houses that will need rehabilitation in that sense. I mean, there's others that really need, there's surrounding areas.
There is. The, we had staff from the Department of Agriculture come with us, we did a tour. We identified several, more than the ten that we could possibly do.
Yeah, just drive them, I mean, some of the houses.
Are we advising these people that they, that this is available?
So because it's a small area, typically what we, the program we had last time was a citywide program before we were classified as a moderate income. And so we did the publications and the newspaper and social media, all of that. But since it's a smaller area, we actually plan to go direct.
Go direct.
Uh, just to notify them. So actually, that goes into the part of the next process, because the the process that we have within the guidelines is a thirty-day application window. The, you know, ideally, we would like to have a longer application window just to give people an opportunity, but because of the timelines within the grant, the time of construction and the delays on supplies, we wanna make sure that we try to get this out as fast as possible, because the last thing we wanna do is risk losing the funding because we can't spend it fast enough.
And this money is strictly up a grant?
Right, so three hundred and fifty grand and the city has to match seventy thousand dollars.
They're forgivable loans. That first one that says assistance provided in the form of a five-year?
Yes, so the selected homeowner has to sign a promise or a note, there is a lien placed on their property because it is a five-year forgivable loan. They cannot go through this program and then sell the home. They have to live with, live in the home for at least five years. If for some reason the person passes away, whoever assumes ownership of the home has to show proof that they are also low-income. Otherwise, the the loan does become payable. Those are not our rules, those are HUD's rules. So we're basically, we're following their template.
And if that's the case, they can sell the property?
Correct.
Okay, another question, once you get, give them the loan, who's responsible of doing the rehab or the construction?
Yes, so the process is a thirty-day application process and then the applications are scored and ranked and then the top applicants go on, undergo a preliminary inspection. The the issue with this program is that that fifty thousand maximum. So let's say the top-ranked applicant, we go to their home and the first inspection says, you know what, this is gonna take eighty thousand dollars. Well, that applicant has to be disqualified, because if we are not able to bring it up to the standards with fifty thousand dollars, then we cannot consider that home at all. That's one of the drawbacks, you know, unfortunately, those individuals who may need it the most may not qualify because they need.
Who gives the the amount or the expense?
So we have, we have to hire a professional, it's contracted out to, to, I don't remember the term, but they provide the work write-up. They go through, they do a professional inspection, they identify all the deficiencies and then they assess the cost.
But who comes, somebody from HUD?
Oh, no, no, we have to hire a consultant who's certified to to do those evaluations.
So let's say that.
An inspector.
Correct.
We qualify for seventy, but I can put out ten to meet your eighty, is that an option?
That the individual can put in?
No, because supposedly you don't have, you don't have the money. Or unless, I mean, like, like under U S D A, their only thing that they actually don't lend you the money is if you have up to fifty thousand dollars in the bank, so if they have maybe, I mean, less than that, maybe, or not, not at all.
You have to bring it up to spec with fifty thousand dollars, it's too much work.
There was some issues that one of our. One of the previous, one of the previous programs, we ran across that issue, where we selected someone before the cap was thirty-five thousand. And so the estimate, estimate was thirty thousand, but then as soon as they started opening up the walls, it turned out to be a fifty thousand dollar project and T D A withdrew their funding. So actually, the city had to end up paying that project because it no longer qualified. So thankfully, after talking to to the agency this go-around, they're no longer doing that. You know, if it goes over incidentally, after we've already awarded, they'll still provide the fifty thousand. We have to put in the remainder if those situations arise. But that specific question as to, let's say it's fifty-five thousand dollars, can they put in the five thousand? I am not sure, we would have to ask that back question.
Yeah, just, I mean, we we have nothing to lose because the only requirement or the only way they do not qualify you for or approve you for if you have over fifty thousand dollars in the bank.
We'll, we'll clarify that.
Okay.
So the the homes go under, the, the, once they clear that preliminary inspection, they go in, final inspection and a scope of work is is established. The city is responsible for pre-screening contractors, so we have, we have to go out and see who's interested. We evaluate them, make sure they have all of the requirements. And then those eligible contractors are allowed to bid on those homes. So they're presented with all the scopes of work, they present a sealed bid, then the homeowner can select from whoever submits a bid. We do not get involved in the selection of the contractor. The agreement is signed between the homeowner and the contractor and the homeowner and the city. The city then pays the contractor upon, in progress bill, basically. Then the city is responsible for conducting final inspection just to make sure that the entire scope of work was actually completed. But just to give you a little bit of reference, in the past programs, we did encounter some issues that we've learned from our previous experiences. Sometimes contractors wanna be nice, homeowner asks for an additional A, B, C task and then those tasks are not to their satisfaction. You know, we've, we've encountered those issues and ultimately, those become civil disputes. We know that our approach now is gonna be be extra clear with the expectations for for both sides, because sometimes people have an unrealistic expectation that it's an H D T V show, right? You're not getting all the luxuries, it is to bring it up to standard.
Just to bring it up to standard.
Correct.
And and it can include interior and the facade, right?
Correct, it it just, those standards, there is actually, there's a couple of items that are in addition to the standards. If there is funding available and we determine that certain appliances need to be replaced, those are also eligible. But it's mostly just the core elements.
Is there a priority there, let's say that we start with roof and then make sure that the outside is stable enough or?
The whole home has to be brought up to standard, so that's where the evaluation is really important, because all of those issues have to be addressed.
Okay.
So the recommendations to to approve the resolution, however, it's contingent on the agency's approval. There are some legal elements that they requested that we we review with our legal team, but it honestly, it's relatively minor. These are the the major items.
We have a recommendation, do we have a a motion?
I have a motion, I mean, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Cruz, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Great program. Twenty-one, consideration on possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, providing for the approval of an agreement between the State of Texas and the City of Eagle Pass for the temporary closure of bus U S two seventy-seven and spur two forty in the historic downtown district of Eagle Pass during various twenty twenty-three events.
Mayor, counsel, this will, this is a resolution that's needed by Texas to allow us to close Main Street to to host some events. So we're putting this blanket resolution to allow us to present this to Texas so we can, we can conduct those events that we usually have.
Perfect, I think this is a simple one.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia, the second, second by Mayor Potem Davis, discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
Well, you got a dog days of summer could be up.
That should be a good one.
Twenty-two, consideration on possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, providing for the approval of an agreement between the State of Texas and the City of Eagle Pass. Oh, they, it reads the same. For the temporary closure of bus U S two seventy-seven and spur two forty in the historic downtown district of Eagle Pass during Eagle Pass incubator construction.
This is a similar resolution, but this one is actually for the construction that's going on with the business incubator. So this one is gonna require to close aid parking spots and the sidewalk to allow us to do the construction. So again, Texas requires this to be approved by by council and then forward to them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz and a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Twenty-three, consideration on possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving a contingent fee agreement for legal services in accordance with the Texas government. Mayor, I'm in.
Yes. For Mr. Garcia, as you may not be aware, since he's the newest one in here, we, in order for contingent fee agreements to be approved, there's a process by which the Texas Attorney General has to review the contingency fee agreement. This contingency fee agreement would allow the city not to have to put in a penny so that we could be represented by the Napoli firm. The Napoli firm is the same firm that is representing the city as well as a number of other governmental entities throughout Texas and the United States on the opioid epidemic and the mass torts litigation that's taking place. We've already received a number of checks and Jesse, I don't know the exact numbers, but they have, have, have had a number of settlements and the City of Eagle Pass has received those funds. They have now proposed also representing the city as well as a number of other governmental entities throughout Texas and the United States on what's called the. on what's called the PFAS litigation. And what it is, is these are substances that have been found now to, in our water source and they're contaminating our water sources in Texas and throughout the United States. And so it's the same sort of agreement where it's a contingency fee agreement. We don't have to put a penny and we're asking, we've reviewed it. We, we made sure that, uh, we prepared all the resolution as well as the public notice that was posted up there. And also the cover letter that needs to go to the Texas Attorney General with specific statutory requirements, um, that, that outline what that litigation would be. Um, so that the Napoli firm can represent us and now they can go after and seek funds from all these, um, manufacturers and producers, uh, of, uh, of these polyfluoroalkyl and related substances, the PFASs. So there's, and there's nothing that the, the, I know the mayor as an attorney is, is, is aware of this. There's no money that the city of Eagle Pass would, would have to fork over. And at the same time, we have a nationally recognized law firm that we're representing the city of Eagle Pass and legal would recommend approval.
Okay, so that's definitely a good thing. Entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz and a second by Mayor Fulton Davis. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Moving on, workshop item number twenty-four, discussion of the city of Eagle Pass budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and possible action on directive to city administration regarding same.
Yes, Mayor and council, so we're just under, just over two, two months away uh, from the anticipated adoption of the budget. So we'll be having several workshops, several meetings regarding the budget. So just to give you kind of an idea, um, we have to work with the tax calendar because the requirements for adopting the tax rate are very, very specific. So as of right now, what we expect is that on August first, we will be presenting the, the tax rule to the city council and that we will be submitting the proposed budget on August eleventh to the city council. And then having our first reading on August fifteenth, the second reading on September fifth and the last reading on September twelfth. Of course, those dates are subject to change depending on council's schedule, but that, that's the plan as of now, just to meet all of the requirements as per state law. Uh, so within the next, uh, month or so, or so, we will be finalizing our recommendations to city council within the proposed budget. Ultimately, these workshops, you know, we're intended to get the feedback from council as to the priorities. Because as we are meeting with the departments, you know, we want to know, okay, what are the priorities of council? Uh, you can either bring them up today or personally, uh, anytime with Mr. Iran or myself so that we, we keep those things in mind as we're making those, those evaluations. Um, this workshop is intended to give you an update on where we stand. Uh, so far, the departments have submitted all of their requests and we have processed those requests. Uh, we've had preliminary discussions and we have established the preliminary revenue estimates for the city. Uh, the goals of today are just to discuss the overview of where we're at with the budget, highlight some significant changes that we have already been added and then discuss challenges and opportunities and then gather the input and the priorities of the council. So just to give you a big picture, uh, look. A big picture look, um, in terms of our expenses. So our total expenses as of right now are over, just over fifty-seven million dollars. The vast majority of that is for personnel. Uh, then our revenue is forty-nine million dollars. So you can tell, we need to make some cuts. Um, this is not atypical from, for, for any fiscal year. Uh, the only, the one thing that I do want to highlight and you'll see it throughout the presentation is this number here in terms of capital. The one thing that we do see is that number has been growing year after year uh, because vehicles, equipment are getting much more expensive. This next. This next slide gives a little bit more details to how those expenses break down. So as you see, same fifty-seven million dollar expense item with public safety being the largest expense item, followed by infrastructure at six million, uh, health and sanitation at eight point six million, parks and rec four million, debt service at seven million, uh, international bridge system at three point two million, educational services at one million and then other governmental services at ten million. This, I think, is a very important, uh, slide because it breaks down all of the revenue for the city. Where does our money come from? So as you can see, the, the highest individual, uh, revenue source is of course the international bridge at seventeen million, property taxes at ten million, sales tax at six, uh, residential waste management fees at five million, uh, ambulance service fees at one point five and then the contribution from Maverick County at one point two. One of the items that I do want to point out because it's, it's something we often do discuss, has to do with property taxes. Um, very often, we get the criticism, right, that property taxes, that people pay property taxes. Why do they have to pay additional fees? I think that's an important number to highlight. Yes, we make ten million dollars. But when we look at expenses, that doesn't even cover public safety. Right? So there's, the city has so many more operations other than, you know, public safety that need to be funded. And that's why we have things like user fees, uh, for solid waste or the drainage fees, which we'll, we'll get into those a little bit. So when we talk about revenues and go into towards the bridge system, we have a breakdown between passenger vehicles and commercial vehicles. Uh, for passenger vehicles, we currently charge four dollars. Uh, the comparison with Del Rio, Laredo and Uvalde, of course, doesn't have a bridge, uh, is pretty comparable. Uh, we're, for commercial vehicles, we're pretty much right in between, uh, Del Rio, Laredo. When it comes to taxes, this is a very important item. Uh, our tax rate is just under fifty cents. When Del Rio has a tax rate of seventy cents, Laredo has a tax rate of fifty-seven cents and Uvalde has sixty-one cents. Uh, again, that brings in just over ten million dollars for us. Uh, when we compare ourselves to across the state, we actually have one of the lowest type of property tax rates. Uh, for sales tax, we currently collect one percent. As we all know, we, within the city, we pay eight point twenty-five percent sales tax. Six point twenty-five go to the state of Texas, one percent go to the county, one percent go to the city. You'll see in comparison, Del Rio, Laredo and Uvalde all have higher rates than we do. That is because we are unfortunately at the disadvantage, we're the only community in the state of Texas that's not eligible to have the additional half, uh, half percent.
Why is that?
Uh, because there was a state law that was passed that authorized Maverick County specifically to adopt that rather than the city. That was passed, I believe, in the nineties, I believe. Yes, so that's about three point three million dollars that the city would receive. Uh, franchise tax. So franchise tax is basically a tax on utilities or other businesses that utilize right of ways or easements to conduct their business. And so that is set by city council. When you adopt an ordinance, uh, signing a franchise fee, you set the percentage. And so the, the, the one million dollars that we collect is from that. Oh, I'm sorry. Then the hotel occupancy, it's currently set at seven percent, which is the same for Del Rio, Laredo and Uvalde. Uh, we are able to increase that to nine percent, but that does have to be for, through an election and it can only be for specific purposes. That actually is going to be one of the options we discuss, we, we talk about CIP, uh, whether or not that's an avenue that, that council does want to explore. Uh, for solid waste, this is the item that has the biggest difference when we compare to other cities in our area. So for city residents, we charge thirteen fifty. Uh, Del Rio charges twenty dollars and fifty-four cents, Laredo twenty-one dollars and Uvalde twenty-one dollars. For county residents, Del Rio charges twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Laredo does not provide service to county residents and Uvalde charges forty-two dollars compared to our sixteen fifty, uh, per month. And that's going to be one of, we did mention this at the last year when we discussed trash collection fees, that we've already reached the point where those fees do need to increase because of the expense on the equipment. Just solely on that, we are, we're trending in the red. Um, then we have some other revenues and fees, the storm drainage fee. So on our water bill, we show a five dollar, uh, per month fee. That brings in just under six hundred thousand dollars. Del Rio does not assess the fee, Uvalde does not assess the fee and Laredo charges six fifty per month. Uh, ambulance service, this is another item that we will, uh, be recommending in the near future to update. Uh, about three years ago, the city council adopted Medicare rates as the rates we charged for everybody using the ambulance service. We had made the recommendation, uh, to go with market rates, basically. So what we're losing really is private insurance. Because private insurance is willing to pay more, but we are charging Medicare rates. Uh, and when it comes to self-pays, we do have programs that do offer discounts, uh, for those who cannot afford it. So we really feel that this is really prime for us to, to collect extra revenue. And then the last item on this list is the EMS agreement with Maverick County. This item, um, honestly, it's, it's a controversial item just because it has caused issues in the past, but it's something that we really do need to talk about. Uh, because this he, this upcoming year will be, be the expiration of the five-year agreement with Maverick County. And just to give you a little bit of history, uh, the existing agreement before this charged four hundred thousand dollars to Maverick County and that was in place for years. Uh, and each year, the operations and fire department kept on increasing. Uh, so when, five years ago, when we, uh, started meeting with Maverick County regarding these fees, we had set the goal of one point two million as their contribution. This was five years ago, when the, the fire department budget was four point five million dollars. This upcoming year, their budget will be seven point five million dollars. So in essence, if we kept everything at the same percentage, they would contribute two point four million. So basically double what they're supposed to contribute as part of the agreement this upcoming year. Uh, I bring that up because we, it's not something that we need to take it, uh, in the action on right now, but it will need to be this upcoming, upcoming year because that, the existing agreement expires. Uh, the other thing I did want to point out here is it's a short list of revenues, but this makes up ninety-two percent of all of our income. We do have other incidental revenues, planning fees, uh, parks fees, but they make up small. This is where the big dollars are. Okay, uh, just to give a little bit of background before going any further. You know, when we look at, I think it's helpful to look at the budget in this picture, right? Because you see our total income, expected expenses. But as a government entity, we use fund accounting. And it's really important to, to take this into consideration when we're talking about the, the, the different types of revenues, uh, because we have these different types of funds. So special revenue funds are funds where the revenues are collected, but either by federal, state or local requirements. That money can only be spent on certain purposes. Then we have enterprise funds that are user fee based, they're basically, basically like businesses. You charge a fee, those fees cover the expenses. And then we have the general fund, which is basically, you can use that money for any government purpose. These are the funds that the city has. So the very top, we have the general fund. The, we have the bridge fund and then the solid waste fund, which are our enterprise funds. All the other funds are special revenues. So all that, the revenue that they generate can only be used for those purposes. The number, we're going to see this slide repeatedly throughout the budget process. The number that we, we have to focus on is this number here. We have our revenues, we have our expenditures, our capital expenditures, but this needs to be zero at the end of the day. We need to adopt a balanced budget. And so as of right now, that is the amount that we need to cut. But if you look at the capital expenditure side, you know, we do have a large amount of capital expenditures. And so all of these funds work together, right? So changes that we make here do impact the general fund. Let's say cuts to the, the convention center and tourism fund. Well, they receive a transfer from the general, the general fund has to pay into this because they do not make sufficient money to cover their own costs. So it's not necessarily we need to cut from the general fund. We, we can make cuts in other funds that will affect that deficit. And that's why I highlight this number here, because when we look at our deficit, well, if we didn't have to buy any capital equipment, you know, we, we wouldn't be in a bad position. But because we do need to invest into our equipment, we do need to make some cuts. Uh, just a couple of highlights into what's included. Uh, so those numbers that I showed already include our standard pay adjustments, which are average, uh, is about three percent. It does include an increase in health insurance costs. I did mention at the last, uh, council meeting that we've had an increase in claims and so now we have to adjust our expense for health insurance. Uh, we, it does include an increase to the retirement plan. So we mentioned, uh, we currently have a five-ten plan where the city employee pays five percent of their gross pay into the retirement and the city does ten percent. So to increase that to a six-twelve plan. And so that is an additional cost of just under half a million. Then we're including, uh, vision insurance. We're doubling the amount of insurance coverage, uh, life insurance coverage for all employees. And then again, mentioning the capital equipment requests. Uh, what this does not include is any requested new positions or upgrades to positions and it doesn't include any changes to existing fees or the, the tax rate. That's it. That's basically the highlights of where we stand right now. So from here, again, we just want to really get that priority. Because all of next week, we're going to spend with the departments going through all of their detailed budget requests, which we will be sending a copy to you. It's about two hundred and fifty pages long, uh, so you can't sleep at night. It's good reading material, uh, but we're also going to give you a summary report to go through the major highlights along with that. But we, we need to sit down with, with the departments once again, with your priorities in mind. Again, you don't need to bring those up today, give you some time to think them through. But of course, you're, you can meet with us anytime and we can, we can discuss those.
When do we get that summary, Jesse?
So we'll provide it to you probably around Wednesday of next week. You need to meet with some departments before we provide that.
I believe we have a meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes.
Hopefully we get the, the summary, yeah, if we get it next week, we'll have enough time to go over it and have other questions for the eighteenth.
Correct.
I know that the numbers don't work, uh, too much for what I asked you before, but I mean, if there is a possibility to still consider, uh, paying for some or part of the insurance for retirement, after retirement, I will greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, and then it's something that we've discussed several times in the past. And, and trust me, we've, we met with the departments and talked about all the different benefits and we know what, what the feeling from employees was, you know, what their needs were, what, how to best address all the issues that we have. And, you know, some, some of the items that we're addressing are low hanging fruit, but others are, are honestly items that they've been a long time coming, like the retirement. Like that small, you know, it's, it's a half a million dollar investment, but for somebody's retirement, you know, for their entire retire, uh, life, that's a huge impact. That's, that's twenty-five percent more that they would receive, you know, compared to what it was before. So it's.
Also mentioned the COLA on the retirement.
Oh, yes. Um, so the state legislature just, uh, passed a bill that expands COLA for existing retirees. So that's something that we're actively looking at. Before, there was a honestly nonsensical requirement that if you decided to do COLA, you had to do retro all, you know, basically all the way to when they retired. That's a huge expense, right? But now under the new provisions, it allows you to implement as of today. And so that gives us the opportunity to address existing retirees by giving them COLA. Of course, it doesn't go retro to when they retired, but it gives them COLA from this point forward. And so it's different things that, that we're exploring.
Like open enrollment?
Basically, yes.
Can, with your summary, can you also include, uh, ways in which we can cover that deficit there?
And so a lot of it, and yes, the, the answer is yes. And to be very honest, we already have pretty much an idea as to how we can get there, right? It's, but it all starts. It starts, it starts with the departments and essentially, everybody does their part, right? We all know that we're a team, we, on, some departments will tell you, hey, yeah, that department needs that equipment more than I do. Take off mine, I can wait another year. And so, you know, I'm very fortunate that, you know, we work with such a good team because they make my job easier. Uh, but we, we do have a plan, but we don't want to set that plan in motion without getting the input of council first, because we want to make sure your priorities are addressed.
Once you see that, um, that package that this is, I don't know how many pages long, you're going to see exactly what the, each department is. to see exactly what each department is requesting. So it's not necessarily what they're going to be getting, but at least it gives you a good picture as to the cost. And once you see the cost of, especially of heavy equipment and capital equipment, it's very, very expensive compared to previous, to previous years. So that's where we can make a lot of cuts, but we're making, or departments make a list of priorities as to what can they live with, what can they, what they really need to change. So we work with that. So it's based on that, but we do want you to see what we see since the first time we meet with them, so you can have a good idea and understanding. And again, like you mentioned, if you have any questions, if you want to meet with us individually, we can book any, we serve any time as needed. We want you to feel included on this budget process, but also want for you to see what we see and how we manage this with the departments.
I know you'll get us there. I remember, my first time on council, and I remember, I mean, learning all this, it just, you know, it just eventually gets, I remember, as I'm looking out to the right-hand corner there, then former chief, I remember, I would say, stop giving up on your fire engine, you need to fight for it. And I understand the process to where they're willing to say, well, this other department needs it, and I was like, you've said that for two years, you need to not give up on it. Eventually, we got it there, right, chief, so, but it's a working process.
I stepped in whenever they were doing their evaluations with each department, so I know it's a lot of work to make this possible, and we appreciate it.
Like, one thing I don't want there is to be a headline that we have to make massive cuts, because while it is a large number, it is something that is manageable. But at the same time, you know, in the next couple of meetings, we're going to be talking about CIP, and we're going to be talking about the investment into our future. So, you know, there's a lot of positive things in this budget, you know, we focus on our needs and a few wants, right? In the perfect world, we would tackle a whole bunch of wants, but, you know, it's always our needs first. And so we're trying to balance the personnel side by addressing the benefits, we're trying to address, you know, the increase in costs across the board, and we're also looking at the future. And we want to make sure that we're allocating that, and, you know, next year, we do pay off another bond, and so it allows capacity to borrow again, and that's where that CIP list, you know, that council will approve, is going to come into play. Because chances are, we will borrow money, and we will be tackling a lot of projects in the next five years.
Thank you, Jesse. So we'll be expecting that summary?
Yes.
On the eighteenth, we'll discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did twenty-five, so we'll go to item number twenty-six, other business, consideration on possible approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Eagle Pass, the Maverick County Hospital District, and Maverick County.
Yes, if I may, I would like to make a motion with a slight change. My recommendation is to keep the health department under the city and form an advisory board, let's say, seven members, for example, one member from MCHD, another one from UMC, for Duncan, city, and the citizen, to be fair to all. I don't know what you all think. I think that we're good with the health department, I mean, I completely agree. I think it's a great thing that Councilman Diaz brought to the table, but I just think that it's fair not to only have an interlocal agreement with MCHD only. Just to be fair, I think that we can handle it through the city and form a board with one member of each entity, just to be fair.
You can have it to where it'll be like, we have representation from each board?
Exactly.
I mean, from each of the entities?
Yeah.
To where each of the members of council are going to that.
Correct, just to be, to have a fair vote. That's my recommendation, that's my motion.
I'll second your motion, I completely agree.
Just for clarity, would you mind repeating that motion?
My motion is to approve a...
I mean, it's not a mandatory interlocal agreement, it's more to form a board.
Yeah, just, yeah, just having the...
I think if that's a motion, then we need to bring it as a different item, because this one is just the interlocal agreement with this.
So we'll have two then?
Do you want to do an MOU?
Am I able to comment? I'm able to comment on this.
Yes. It all depends, it's just a modification of the interlocal agreement, mayor, then we can move forward. If it's a completely different phase, then we would probably have to come back with a different, but you can give us direction already, so...
Legal question, but we have a motion on the floor.
Maybe it was too... To executive session.
If you would like to withdraw your motion, then we can take it into executive session.
Can I request a motion to take it to executive session?
She has to resent her motion. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion and take it to executive session, yes.
Cruz withdraws her motion and makes a motion to take this to executive session? We have a second, by Councilman Garcia's discussion, all in favor? We have unanimously, we'll take item number twenty-six into executive session pursuant to...
Five-five-one.
Five-five-one.
Oh-seven-one, legal services. Legal services.
Legal consultation, sorry.
Twenty-seven, consideration on possible approval to issue request for qualifications for international bridge master plan.
Hello, good evening already, mayor and council. So we bring this item to mayor and council for approval to go out for an RFQ to solicit services for a bridge master plan. As y'all are aware, we continue to see growth with our commercial traffic, our non-commercial traffic on a monthly basis, that we feel, after careful consideration and discussion between city administration or city engineer, that the time is now for us to put in a strategic plan for the expected growth in the future, in the future years. Right now, we have a couple of projects in the pipeline that will address the current needs and some years into the future, but I think the time is now to develop and adopt a strategic master plan that will put us well into the future and will guide us on what we need to do and at what certain times to ensure that the bridge continues to operate efficiently and effectively through its operation. Danny, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Basically, it's just a plan to see where we are, where we want to be, and how we get there. I know Jesse would appreciate a plan to make sure our tolls and revenues can support any future funding that we want to have, any bonding, et cetera, et cetera, so that's what the plan is.
I mean, our bridge systems are the lifeline of the city. I agree that a master plan for the international bridge system would be a good thing.
So all entertain a motion? We have a motion by Mayor Protem Davis and a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. Executive session, twenty-eight, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, regarding a presentation on Project Kennedy and discussion, authorizing acting city manager to negotiate terms for chapter three-eighty agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and private investor and possible action in open session regarding same. Twenty-nine, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations for the solar eclipse events and possible action in open session regarding same. Item thirty, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding litigation style as cause number nineteen dash zero-four, dash three-seven-one-seven-six, MCV Apollonia and Maria Delma Delgado versus RBY Family Trust, two thousand and six, and possible action in open session, including but not limited to acceptance of Landy and Banach, Inc., settlement and release of all claims relating to legal representation. We're also taking item twenty-six into executive session, and we're going into executive session at eight-fifty-four PM. Okay, we are coming back from executive session at ten-twenty-two PM. We will start with item number twenty-six, consideration on possible approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and Maverick County Hospital District and Maverick County. All entertain a motion?
Can I make a motion to table the item for next meeting?
Okay, we will, there's a motion to table by Councilwoman Cruz, a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, we will put this on the meeting for the eighteenth. All those in favor of tableting? Unanimous. Executive session, twenty-eight, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, regarding a presentation on Project Kennedy and discussion, authorizing acting city manager to negotiate terms for chapter three-eighty agreement between City of Eagle Pass and private investor, and possible action in open session regarding same.
Can I make a motion to move forward with the negotiations?
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz. A second? Second? You also want to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement?
Yes, sir.
Negotiate and execute?
Yes.
And a second by Mayor Protem Davis, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-nine, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations for the solar eclipse events and possible action in open session regarding same. All entertain a motion on this.
So we'd like to make a motion to move forward with the negotiations to the city manager and staff.
And to execute. And to execute.
And to execute as well.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz, second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thirty, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding litigation style as cause number nineteen dash zero-four, dash three-seven-one-seven-six, MCV Apollonia and Maria Delma Delgado versus RBY Trust, Family Trust, two thousand and six, and possible action in open session, including but not limited to acceptance of Landy and Banach, Inc., settlement and release of all claims related to legal representation.
Mayor, the action item that we'd ask the council to consider would be to authorize the city manager to execute the compromise and settlement agreement and full and final release that has been provided to the council, and that has been discussed in executive session with the full council as well as administration.
I make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion to that effect by Mayor Protem Davis and a second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Cruz and a second by Mayor Protem Davis. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Have fun.
Ten-twenty-five PM.
Drive safely, please.
Thank you.
Have fun in Bintown. Have fun in Bintown.